Okay, all right. All right, here we go. Good evening. I call to order this regular meeting of the Carabelle City Commission. It's Thursday, September the 1st, 2022, and at 6:00 PM we're conducting this meeting in the Carabelle City Hall chambers, and we will open with a prayer by Commissioner Allen, and then I will lead the Pledge of Allegiance. So please stand.
Our God and our Father in heaven, we're so grateful that we have the opportunity to come together today and work on things that would be beneficial to the beloved folks that live here and work here and live and die here in many cases. We ask you to be with us in all wisdom that we might make those decisions that would be best in your name and for your purposes. And we ask this in the name of the Son you sent us, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Allen. And good evening and welcome to everyone. I thank you for silencing your phones. As I mentioned before, if you would like to speak during public comment or during the discussion portion of any agenda item, please complete your speaker card and then submit that to our city clerk, Ms. Keisha. All public comments are kept to a maximum of three minutes with a one-time visit to the podium per item. Loud outbursts are not allowed. So I thank you very much. We move on to the consent agenda for the July 7th, 2022 regular commission meeting minutes and the attorney's invoices for June and July. Did everyone have a moment to review those meeting minutes?
Yes.
Do we have a motion regarding that?
I'll make a motion. One second.
Okay, so we have that motion back, Commissioner Allen, second back, Commissioner Brown. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next, we move on to the public comment portion of this meeting. And is there anyone who would like to speak under public comment? Anyone who would like to speak under public comment? Okay, I see Ms. Sharon Glaze just come up and say your name for the record. Maximum of three minutes, and this is an item that is not on the agenda. I hope. Hello?
Do you have to turn that off? I don't know how. Thanks. Honored to talk.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Sharon Glaze. I live on Bragdon in Carabelle. I'm here to talk to you again about Jordan Bayou. It's a mess. I don't know where Jessica is. She was supposed to come tonight. There's actually been someone out there. I don't know who sent them or where they're from. I'm just speaking of what I know. He went out there inspected. Hers specifically, she's got water damage and structural damage, and that's just the first one that he looked at. He was on number three yesterday at the end of the day. The landscapers that they hired, they did hire somebody. They actually went in with a bulldozer, and the second they unloaded it, it got stuck. So they came back the next day with a different bulldozer with tracks on it, and it was such a big job that they quit. They said they needed more money, and they quit. So as far as I know, as of today, I hadn't heard that anybody else was out there. But it is a big mess. Jessica has a harassment complaint against the management out there. HUD called her today and told her that they were moving forward that she has a legitimate complaint. So I just wanted to let you know that there's a big mess.
Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate your report, or I do anyway.
Thank you.
And I hope the commission does as well.
True.
Okay, do we have any other public comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda? Any other public comment? Okay, then we'll move forward to the commissioners' reports. Commissioner Brown, do you have something for us?
Not tonight.
Okay. Commissioner Allen?
I have nothing now.
All right, thank you both, though. Commissioner Walden, do you have anything for us?
None.
Okay, and Commissioner Melander, do you have something for us?
Nothing tonight, ma'am.
Okay, all right, then. I thank you all, but I'll make up for you. I've got quite a sufficient report, but I'm going to report on our budget workshop and all of the budgets. We had no one from the local newspaper here to report on it or to sit in on our budget workshop, and so I just want to go ahead and get that out in the public. Our workshop was on August 23rd, where this board reviewed the proposed 2022-2023 fiscal year budgets for the general fund, the water and sewer enterprise, the community redevelopment agency, or the CRA district, and the airport enterprise. And we also reviewed the suggested allocations for the $1,412,000 American Rescue Plan grant and the funds remaining in the CARES Act grant. The workshop was conducted in two sessions on that day, lasting about five hours total, which resulted in the draft 2022-2023 budgets and are available through a public records request if y'all would like to see that. Four members of the public attended the first half of the workshop, including my husband, who also attended the second half and videoed the approximately five-hour workshop. The airport is expected to make approximately $89,000 in the next fiscal year, which includes an old outstanding delinquent hangar rent debt, rents from 11 hangars, and aircraft tie-downs, and aircraft fuel sales. All airport revenues are reinvested directly back into the airport, general operations, infrastructure upkeep, and fuel purchases, making the airport self-sufficient and alleviating the need for general fund tax dollars to be expended on the Carabelle Thompson Airport. This budget is balanced. Airport revenues generated from airport-related rents and fuel sales cannot be used for expenses outside the airport budget. The CRA revenues are expected to be approximately $493,650 this year, generated through tax increment revenues contributed to by the City of Carabelle and the Franklin County government. CRA expenditures are planned for district maintenance and cleanup, landscaping irrigation, street signs, Christmas decorations, a few facade grants, roadway repairs, $75,000 for match funding to a $650,000 community development block grant for Marine Street revitalization that's supposed to start here anytime soon now, $10,000 for event promotions and fireworks at the Holiday on the Harbor, $25,000 to replace fencing at Sands Park, and $90,000 for Phase 1 of the Military Flagpole Memorial at Veterans Park. This budget, too, is balanced. Revenues obtained from the CRA district tax increment revenues cannot be used for expenses outside the CRA district. Next year's water and sewer enterprise revenues are expected to be $2,436,000. Revenues are from water and sewer rate collections and tap fees. These revenues are allocated for general operations and maintenance of two water treatment plants, one advanced wastewater treatment plant, five water towers, numerous lift stations and master lift stations, equipment, miles of underground infrastructure, modest salary increases with associated benefits, capital projects to include construction of two bold barns to provide shade over plant equipment, a truck lease payment, connection of two lift stations to an automated alarm system, two new sewer lift stations to be located at two new subdivisions, and an outbound reused water meter at the wastewater treatment plant. $98,000 will be reserved for water and sewer contingencies. This budget is also balanced. Revenues obtained from water and sewer rate collections and tap fees cannot be used for expenses outside the water and sewer budget. Now for the general fund budget. This is the budget that affects your city property taxes. After a lengthy discussion regarding staff's proposed budget and comparison to several different millage rates, which I presented, including the current millage rate of 8.38, the rollback rate of 7.66, the millage rate of 7.25 proposed by staff, and a millage rate of 7, this board came to a consensus and agreed in principle to a millage rate of 7.25 for the next year. This is almost 1/2 mil below the rollback rate and a 1.13 mil below this year's millage rate. The City of Carabelle had an increase in taxable property values from $135,281,000 last year to $147,971,000 this year. This is an increase of approximately $12,690,000 in property values in the City of Carabelle. Budget cuts needed to take the millage down to 7 would require discontinuing the fireworks which are budgeted for next year at $20,000, as well as removing the $10,000 for cemetery expansion and the $10,000 budgeted for the streets and roads capital project outlay. Staff warned us against taking the millage rate too low, which could result in the need for a future sharp rate hike and the event property values plummeting. So by using the millage rate of 7.25, the city can expect ad valorem tax revenues of approximately $1,092,000, up by $19,000 from last year. But we must remember that ad valorem tax revenues are supplemented by franchise fees, utility taxes, state revenue sharing, state sales tax, and the like, the likes, making the city's total 2022-2023 general fund budget at $1,656,420. All revenues are tentatively allocated for general city operations and maintenance to include two museums, five city parks, two fishing piers, two boat ramps, the industrial building on Airport Road, 60,000-square-foot building, the post office building, a small rental building on Southeast Avenue B, the city hall building right here, citywide utilities and streetlights, two cemeteries, the commissioners' pay, the administrative department, the police department, streets and roads department, building department, and fire department. And we even accounted for increased fuel costs next year with the inflation rate. Modest salary increases with associated benefits were tentatively approved, along with $25,000 to local nonprofit organizations, $20,000 for the Fourth of July fireworks, $61,000 for city hall loan payments, and two truck lease payments. And this is just to hit the high spots. This budget, I'm proud to say, is balanced. The first budget hearing and tentative vote for the 7.25 millage rate and budget will be held on September 4th, 2022 at 5:01 PM. The second budget hearing and final vote for this 7.25 millage rate and budget will be held on September 27th, 2022, again, 5:01 PM. For transparency, the list of suggested expenditures for the $1,412,000 American Rescue Plan grant was posted on the city's website homepage about five weeks ago. Some project priorities were agreed to in principle during the budget workshop on August 23rd, but we will need to obtain cost estimates on several remaining project suggestions and then vote on a final list of project allocations. And as stated on the website, all of this will be conducted through advertised workshops and public meetings, or public meetings, whatever we decide. So if any of you have questions, you know, just please let me know. I would be happy and proud to meet with you, you know, to address your questions and give you a full review of the budget. I want everyone to have the opportunity to ask questions and to allow full transparency. And I am not going to go without thanking the staff and all of the department heads and departments' employees for working with these budgets year after year. They've done a very good job. We've kept our expenses down since I've been on board for 11 years now, and I do appreciate it, and I appreciate you presenting the budgets as you did and recommending the 7.25 millage rate this year, down 1.13 from last year's rate. And I want to thank this board also for doing its part to keep city property taxes down and as low as possible for our citizens and property owners. So I'm just real proud of you all, and thank you very much. And now I will go to the attorney's report, sir. Thank you.
All right, just two very quick things. I believe we drafted, and the mayor has executed the reimbursement agreement or memorandum agreement between ourselves and the Carabelle Lighthouse Association. We're at the last meeting. The commission had agreed to allocate some money to them to be reimbursed by TDC and in turn reimbursed to the city. So that's moved ahead, and I know that some on the commission have had contact with the school board, but I've also sent just an email to the school board advising them of the situation that I think they've already been advised of individually. But I did that through their attorney, and we ultimately will need to still get a corrective deed, depending on how they want to handle it. But obviously, we kind of have a feeling for how they want to handle it, but I'll confirm that and get the corrective deed, and we'll be moving ahead on that.
Do we have questions from Mr. Hartman?
What's the corrective deed?
The corrective deed is the property appraiser's office picked up on an error in the legal description. So pretty minor. Roddenberry's fixing it, and then it's, yeah, just have a, and then it was a, yeah, the survey didn't close. It was an ARC. They got a bearing wrong on it.
Okay, is there anything else, sir?
That's it.
Okay, any further questions for our city attorney? Okay, then we'll move to our city administrator, Ms. Courtney.
Did I send out this week the department reports? Did everybody receive those? Do I have any questions? No questions. We need to schedule a workshop for either September or October for the American Rescue Plan budget planning. Do y'all have a preference on a day?
We can do that after one of our budget hearings. I think we had talked about possibly scheduling another workshop after one of those budget hearings, or we could...
When we get that on the agenda, that's quite possible, that we will need to have another workshop.
We could postpone this one to October, you know, if y'all would like to do that, since we've got a CRA meeting this week and this month still, and the first budget hearing and the second budget hearing, and most likely another workshop.
It's a pleasure, Board.
I would recommend postponing it until October. Let's see what we look like in October.
Well, one of the issues on the American Rescue Plan that we wanted to get figured out as soon as we could was the second phase of the Flagpole Memorial, and the sooner we figure that out, it may save us a good bit of money if we can do it all at once.
That's correct, and I would like to, for transparency and due process for the public, if we want to add more items, I would like to add more items and post those on the website so that the public has time to see that. That request for $25,000 and something was brought up at the last moment, the last minutes of our budget workshop late in the day, and no one was here, and we need to be able to have that in full transparency for the public, I believe, because this is a $1,400,000 grant, a once-in-a-lifetime grant that has been given to this city, and we need to make sure that we are planning this very carefully. We originally planned through this CRA money can fund this American Flagpole project was going to run total about $130,000, $135,000, and the CRA can fund that in two phases. So, I mean, I don't think we need to jump to conclusions here on this valuable money that's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for the citizens of Carabelle and the city. And we have an opportunity to fund it through CRA funds. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I'm kind of the same way. I would, and I was the one that brought it up, and I don't think it was that noteworthy that it was at the last minute. But anyway, I was the one that brought it up. And beyond that, I wouldn't mind us having a special meeting or a workshop prior to October, if the board's good with that. And the reason why I say that is some of these things, well, getting some of these things are going to take a long time, possibly take a long time. I can't say they are. And I would like to see us work a little bit more on it, and not just that one item either, but work more on it and kind of come to some consensus and have a vision to move forward a little bit. That's just my view.
And I do, I like the word vision. We need to have a vision, and we need to make sure what we're doing, you know, with this money, this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity.
And I agree with you, Mayor, and I think we all have that. You know, they're going to be wise on what our choices are, and I think we do well at that, but...
Well, what about, what about we all get together? We're all here on our CRA meeting day. You know, we always plan here to be on that Tuesday. That's September the 20th. What about that day? And we could do that in the morning, and then this would be a public announcement for that workshop.
Do you want to do 10:00 AM?
10:00 AM would be good.
Let me ask this.
Okay.
You mentioned workshop.
Well, it could be a meeting, whatever y'all decide.
I would be interested in a special meeting.
Okay.
Where if we need to and can, and we decide to, we can take action.
On at least some of them.
Yeah.
I have an appointment that morning, but Keisha will be here.
Okay.
But again, that's the only thing I'm saying is to work on it. I don't mind working on it. Let's work on it.
We do need to work on it.
I think we made good decisions, yeah.
And, but not to be too, you know, quick about it, because, and I want it to be transparent because I hear some, it is a big deal, and some of the other governments are being, you know, what did you do with the money? Where's the money going? You're spending the money on, you know, things like regular general operations, and we have discussed this is important money, and it's recommended by the Florida League of Cities to put this towards projects that are going to be long-lasting, that will help the entire community. And we have seriously discussed it and certainly planned to put money towards our cemetery expansion development.
Yes.
Okay, so how about then September the 20th for a special meeting at 10:00 AM?
That's fine with me.
We need a motion.
I'll make the motion to have a special meeting on the 20th, 10:00 AM.
Okay.
Just a second.
All right, we have that motion back, Commissioner Melander, second back, Commissioner Brown. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Okay, Ms. Courtney.
Earlier this year, we went to the Torres Development Council and asked them for funding for a Dune walkover at McKissick Beach, and they approved it. So we asked the DEP, you know, they own the property there, if it was okay to start, and they said, well, we haven't approved early a management plan. So everything's been submitted, and they're having a committee meeting on October the 14th to approve the land management plan. And once that's been approved, then we can start the construction for the Dune walkover. So in case you were wondering, where's that at? That's what we're waiting for. We received a letter this month from the DEO stating that our comp plan needed to be updated to include the peril of flood information. We did include some language in our last update, so we're not sure they're going to, we sent them some information, and they're going to get back with us and let us know if that's sufficient or if we need to do another update. It's possible that we may need to do an update on the comp plan. Okay, we did cut through a footpath access on the city property, the property that we're considering for the cemetery. That's just to the west of the pond area, so that has been completed, and you can walk down through there and kind of see what the property looks like. I think you could have went a little bit further, but you get a good idea of what's there. And then Russell's not here, but on Russell's report, he sent out an email earlier this month on the Summer Camp, and his suggestion was to come up with a committee that could hash out some of the details, and then for that committee to hash out the details, the attorney to draw up a development agreement, bring it to you guys, you comment on it, make changes, and then send it to Summer Camp. So that's what we're requesting. We're requesting that you guys approve a committee. We're suggesting it be myself, Charlie Painter, Justin Messer, and Russell Large, and then Dan as needed. Stan may not need to attend every meeting, but the ones, whatever he needs to attend, he can attend.
Well, I just want to say that this commission, the board, has participated in three workshops recently, this board, and then in the past, we participated in several workshops regarding this. If we continue, this board continues with the negotiations like we have during these workshops, it just, it will prolong the negotiations. I think that Russell came up with a good suggestion. It surprised me when he wrote that. I will want to say and make sure here that we agree on some fundamental items before we remove ourselves temporarily, temporarily, that the utility transition or utility takeover should not and will not cause increased rates to our water and sewer customers that are outside the St. James Utility Company service area or outside Summer Camp. We do not, and they understand that. He had that on his PowerPoint. The provision of water and sewer services to the Summer Camp District by the City of Carabelle must be feasible, functionable, functional, and operational upon initiation of services. Is that, do we agree on that? Okay.
I think we've all pretty much said that.
Yeah. And then that the St. James Island Utility Company will provide all the sewer infrastructure connections from existing platted lots to their sewer lift stations and on to the wastewater treatment plant there. If that, if they're technical, if they come to terms on exactly how that's going to operate or if they end up deciding it would be less expensive to connect to our wastewater treatment plant. The St. James Island Utility Company will transfer property to the City of Carabelle, including but not limited to land and real property consisting of the Summer Camp Water Treatment Plant, the Wastewater Treatment Plant over there, their storage tanks, their lift stations, and all associated water and sewer-related infrastructure. Is that, we have discussed that, and that has been part of the negotiations.
Yeah, I think what you just stated, Mayor, is a good overview, but I think out of our workshops and our meetings, we've had, as far as you've just stated, just to reiterate, this board as a whole has pretty much spelled out where we stand, where we would like to go, and what Courtney has suggested, in my opinion, is especially with Charlie and with Justin, I myself will rely on their expertise in that field a lot for their information, and our engineer and Courtney as a city administrator can move forward in what way she's described it as a committee. And I think what Russell submitted, I read his email as well, and I think that'd be a good approach to move forward. That's just my opinion.
All right, then. Well, with that, then, I will motion to appoint a committee of five consisting of Mr. Large, the city administrator, water and sewer superintendent, the water and sewer assistant superintendent, and Mr. Hartman, when legal counsel is required, to represent the city's interest in further negotiations with the St. Joe Company regarding the technical standards and legal aspects of a draft development agreement. All of that pending final review and comment and vote by the city commission.
I'll say.
Okay, all right. That motion is by myself, Mayor La Paz, second back, Commissioner Melander. Is there any further discussion?
You want to read that again?
I'll give it to Keisha.
Just give it.
She knows how to do that.
Just make it.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, so all in favor? Any opposed? And that motion carries, and hopefully you all will be able to move along a lot faster now instead of having to conduct public meetings. All right, Ms. Courtney is...
That is all right.
Okay. Okay, then we'll move on to the city clerk's report.
Let me get called up here.
Okay. Don't try to type that. I will send it to you.
Okay.
I'm just going to announce some meetings for next month. We have September, September the fif-
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
September the 14th is our tentative budget hearing, our first tentative budget hearing. I was just, September the 15th is a P and Z that's tentative. We don't have anything for the agenda as of now, but that is the regularly scheduled at 2:00. September 20th is our CRA meeting and now workshop at 10:00 and the CRA meeting's at 1:30.
Keisha, that was a special meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, special meeting. Yes, you're right. And then on the 27th is our final budget hearing at 5:01. Both budget hearings are at 5:01. And then our next city commission meeting will be October the 6th at 6:00. You have been notified.
Yeah.
That was one of the public notifications, so, and it's being video recorded and broadcast on the city's Facebook page and Forgotten Coast TV. Okay, so is there, are there any questions for Ms. Keisha? All right then, thank you very much. And Mr. Russell is absent. He's not on the phone either, right?
No, he's not.
I just wanted to call attention to one of the sad items that I see on here regarding the Baywood Drive improvements. This project was not awarded for the current grant cycle. So that was the second year in a row that we've submitted to the FDOT SCOP for this $1.52 million roadway improvement, Baywood Drive. And the next, he says, the next available grant cycle opens on December the 1st, 2022. So we may consider resubmitting to fund that project. All right. Okay, we'll move to the advisory board reports. And Ms. Tamra is up to talk to us about her historical marker.
Don't let me get in the way. I think so. Does that work? Yeah. Can you guys hear me? There were several items on our report this month that I would encourage you all to look at and especially remind you that this is the month of the International Coast to Coast. So it's on the 18th.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth. Thank you. So for the purposes of narrowing down what the focus of this is about, we're proposing that the city apply for a historical marker through the state historical marker program. Courtney, were you able to get that picture?
Absolutely.
Okay. There, you've seen different, this is similar to the markers, like, just like the marker that's now in front of Rio Carabelle. But what we did just so you would have a sense of what it would look like is if you put it in front of the old city hall there, it would be, essentially, we would take down part of the flagpole and put that sign where the flagpole is. And then we would continue to mount a proper American flag outside on a daily basis when we're open. But the state has an entire procedure for how you go about qualifying to have a historical marker. And this building goes by its architecture, by its funding as a WPA project in 1938, and by the fact that it was built handmade bricks by a local mason and used for such an important city purpose for 70 years. It qualifies for a marker. So it also will assist us, once we get that, it will assist us in getting other funds to perhaps renovate the building at some future date. So that's always looked at as a possible way to do this. And so I drafted up some suggested language that you might want to use. It's extremely difficult because the, you can only have a little over 1,200 characters with spaces. And with just three tiny little paragraphs, it's just amazing how short it was. But so it says 1235, that's characters with space, including spaces. So we have done a word count on that and it's 1202. So we have a few, we could stick in a few more words if anybody sees the need for that or can think of a topic that we didn't cover that was important in the function of the city. I've asked, I've asked a lot of old people who've lived here all their lives, what, what do you think the most important things that happened in that building were? And they pretty much fall into these ideas about how to develop the town and then the whole era of what to do during the post-World War, that whole era of developing the community and post Camp Jordan Johnson days where it was such a booming improvement in building in the town. They've got a lot of resources. And, but those kind of decisions and then as we developed in a commercial seafood port and then recreational seafood. Those people keep talking back about some of those things and, and a few things that we can't put on the historical marker. But for the most part, this is it. So we're encouraging the cost of a marker from the state is $2,420. And the freight on it is approximately $175. And Mayor La Paz realized that we, there is a category in the TDC budget for historical signs. And that sign will qualify as, I believe, if things all go according to our plan, that if you all approve putting in line for a marker, putting in front of the building, and if you approve that, then we'll go forward to get funding done by TDC. And then we almost can get, we almost could get into the state council that quick if we, but if not, we can go to the next meeting of the state council. And so once there's a, there's a five-person council at the state level that approves these markers. And then once, and we can't do a thing with making them until they're approved. And they get to work, tinker with it a little bit, worksmith it. But basically, I think it would be, it would be a good recognition of the building. We were considering, we've been calling it Carabelle Old City Hall. What we might call it is Carabelle Historic City Hall. Since it sounds a little bit, I don't know, since I'm getting.
Or historic Carabelle, right, right, yeah.
Instead of, I'd rather be historic than old.
Yeah.
So I think, I think that would be good.
So don't be too historic.
But anyway, that's basically what we're suggesting. I will say, the last time I tried to get a grant for renovating the building, the lady asked me if we had a marker. And we said, no, that, not yet. And she said, well, if you care about this building, you'll have a marker. So I took her to heart because she's now in charge of the committee that decides who gets the grants, so.
Okay, Ms. Tamra then, did you say that it would be better for the city to make the application to the historic preservation?
I think it's because the city owns the building.
Okay.
And then what you put on the sign is the sponsor goes actually printed on the sign. So if we got, TDC could fund it, we could actually put, for sponsors, we could put, you know, City of Carabelle comma.
And the TDC.
TDC.
Okay, and then you, did everyone, you want, I think what you would need here is first of all, for us to approve or disapprove the placement of the historical marker and the proposed wording that you've submitted.
Right.
Contingent, just some slight changes.
Yes.
And I trust you in your wording. Don't ask me, I would never get all my words on that one little thing there. So.
Harder than it looks.
So I would, I would ask for a motion to approve or disapprove the location that they have pointed out for the marker in front of the historic Carabelle City Hall or the Justice Building, along with the approve or disapprove the proposed wording submitted by Ms. Tamra Allen.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
To approve.
I'll second.
Okay. All right, so is that okay? We have that motion by Commissioner Melander, second by Commissioner Brown. Is there any discussion regarding that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that motion carries. So then, I believe then what we would need next is for this board to approve or disapprove the, what we have to do, we need to apply to the TDC first.
Right.
To make sure that the, you know, that they just approved the funding, it's just a process. And then from there, apply to the historical preservation to the state. So we would want to approve or disapprove the application to be submitted by the city to the TDC for funding to purchase this historical marker and then for the city to follow through and submit the application to the division of the historical preservation for the actual marker.
I've already got two-thirds, but in the computer.
Okay, we, Courtney and I knew you would be helping. So thank you very much.
And you know, it's not just me. I've got a bunch of other people that look at this stuff and help me.
Okay. All right, so.
I'll make the motion to approve the applications to this TDC and the state.
Okay, very good. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Okay. All right, we have that second by Commissioner Brown, second, motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Allen. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that motion carries. How about that?
I just have to tell you, this is the third time I've come with a proposal. And it's the first time I've ever had it approved.
Okay.
So I am so thrilled. It's, it must be just the right time and the right place. And we figured out how to pay for it, so.
Okay, and I want to remind everyone too, one day that I really like is the Smithsonian Museum Day. And that's on the same day as the cleanup, but it opens, what are the hours?
Well, the cleanup starts at 8:00 in the morning and goes to noon. But the museum opens at 10:00 in the morning and stays open until 5:00. So there'll be plenty of time to do.
So all three museums will be, okay. All right, that's a good time to go around and catch all three museums and check them out.
Yeah, Monday.
All right, and that's September the 17th. A lot happening on that Saturday.
Thank you so much.
All right, and thank you. Thank you for your report.
Thank you, Ms. Tamra.
All right, then we will move on to the aviation advisory board, report. We have a report from the chair of the aviation advisory board, Mr. Sullivan, regarding their budget workshop, which we reviewed and tentatively approved that budget. Thank y'all for working on it. And then the hangar waitlist, it says they've got 25 verified pilots now on the waitlist for hangars over there. And then the FDOT resolution, which will be taken up again. They reworked that again. Is there any, is there any other questions for Mr. Sullivan?
Good job.
Okay, all right then. Then next up would be the Crooked River Lighthouse Association. They're not here. And they didn't submit a report, but I'll just try to tell you real quick that I went out there on, I think it was Tuesday when they broke ground. GNH Concrete has laid the forms, put the forms and the concrete for the foundation for the Carabelle. And so Steve and his volunteers have done a lot of work already on building the modular units to bring out there. So Steve says that we should see some good progress on that now. And that by the Lantern Fest in November, the weekend before Thanksgiving, that we will, he'll not, I don't, we don't know, he doesn't know if it'll be ready for, you know, to use, but it would definitely be ready for show and tell. And they'll have some demonstrations out there. Thank you, thank you very much to GNH Concrete for providing the labor and the concrete, the materials to do that foundation and get this project underway. It's been long awaited, funded by donations and public donations, fundraisers, money from the insurance payment. And there was one other, one other something that funded it. I wrote about it.
TDC.
TDC, okay. All right, I thank y'all very much. And we'll move on then to the public hearing, which is Resolution 042022. And it's the FDOT request for the taxiway terminal project. And you'll read that forth, Mr. Hartman.
All right, this is a City Carabelle Resolution 04-2022. It's a resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute transfer of funding of a public transportation grant agreement amendment. Whereas the City of Carabelle agrees to negotiate and execute an amendment to the public transportation grant agreement for project number 423905-5 to increase funds to $335,233. Whereas the City of Carabelle needs 100% grant funding to mitigate the wetlands present on the site in order to initiate site work of the new taxiway and hangar facilities. Whereas the Carabelle City Commission wishes to take advantage of the generous offer of the Florida Department of Transportation to abide 100% of the funding to make these needed improvements to the Carabelle Thompson Airport. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Commission of the City of Carabelle, Florida, assembled regular meeting on September 1st, 2022, that the mayor be, and she is hereby authorized and directed, to negotiate and execute an amendment to the public transportation grant agreement for project number 423905-5 with the Florida Department of Transportation, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be attached to the public transportation grant agreement between the City of Carabelle and the Florida Department of Transportation when fully executed. Yeah, that's it.
Okay. Do we have any questions regarding this resolution from the FDOT? They wrote the wording. This is their third time.
That's what I said.
Second amendment, they write the wording, Courtney sends it to them with the signatures. They don't like the wording and so they send it back.
I'll just make one motion. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 042022 as read by the attorney.
All right, thank you, sir.
What am I going to say for the third time?
I'll say.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so that motion to approve that resolution by Commissioner Melander, second by Commissioner Allen. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you. All right, we'll try it again next month. All right. Next we have ordinance 486. This is the second and final reading and we will be voting on this ordinance. And Mr. Hartman, if you'll read that forth.
Was that, I'm sorry, was that Allen second?
Yes, Melander and Allen.
And this one is ordinance 486, by title, an ordinance of the City of Carabelle amending and modifying the terms and conditions of ordinance 328, also known as the quote, Sunset Isle and Yacht Club ordinance, close quote, providing for additional permitted uses of the property, repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, to the extent of such conflict and establishing an effective date.
All right, do we have questions regarding this, this ordinance? I will say, we all remember that the Sunset Isle Homeowners Association, a large group, were out here last, last month when we had the first reading. And they were all in favor of this and actually brought it to the city staff to change their BUD ordinance. So do we have any further questions on it?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. So we have a motion by Commissioner Melander, second by Commissioner Brown to approve ordinance 486 as read. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank y'all. Okay, then we're going to move on to the quasi judicial hearing. And convening this quasi judicial hearing, it's item one, discussion of possible action concerning a special exception located at 302 West Ninth Street. located at 302 West Ninth Street to allow a residential use, which is currently zoned with a C1 mixed-use commercial, and I would ask Ms. Keisha or Mr. Hartman to give us some details on that and how that the PNZ recommended.
All the notices were sent out as required. We didn't get any feedback back, and the PNZ voted unanimously.
To recommend, approved.
Yeah, recommend, approve.
All right. Have, have we done this, well, we've done several for this side of Ninth Street, have we?
We've done all other, all three other properties on the street.
Okay.
Yeah.
On that same side, same side of the property.
Right.
Okay. All right, then, do we have questions to the attorney or Ms. Keisha regarding this request?
No, but I just make one comment, but I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Just a second.
All right, okay, what's your comment, Commissioner?
Just the same thing that we, that we reiterated with the other approvals that I remember, that remember that they're in a commercial district, and commercial noises that they're going to hear. Just, just a reminder that they're living in a commercial district.
I know, I, I generally say that, that they're in a commercial district, and there's going to be all kinds of noises and parades and parties and music and clock towers ringing and everything is dinging, and, you know, when they come and complain and they want it quiet, then it's, it's hard to, to deal with, that they are in a commercial district. And so, do we have any other comments?
We do have one further.
Okay, all right, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I kind of got the opportunity to kind of discuss some of these comments that the PNZ did the other day, but I figured that this was a much better form because those meetings aren't recorded, and I kind of get to say some of my thoughts on this. Unfortunately, I went back to 2015. I was reviewing the 2020 comp plan that was created in 2006, and, you know, part of the policy in 1G1, policy 1TAC12, the regulation of land use consistent with a future land use map shall be accomplished by enforcing the city's land development regulations which outlines permitted use in accordance with the comp plan. So I went back, and since 2015, nine years after the comp plan, there's been 25 special exceptions to turn residential C1s into residential houses. There's been one denied, one taken. So before 2016, I have no clue. I'm no way saying that the board should deny this request because we have a habit of approving them, but Ms. Courtney reached out to some updates in the comp plan earlier, and I think that that's kind of my point with our land use and our comp plan. Here we are sitting in 2022, and with the amount of special exceptions that we are granting, and I understand these houses was built, they've been there for 20 years, but the reason we have special exemptions is because we don't have to allow them to continue being residential. We're not held to anything on that. So I would really ask the board to maybe look at our comp plan, and maybe let's revisit it and update it, and is this area truly need to be commercial with 90% of it being residential? Maybe we need to look at other places for commercial. Thank you.
And thank you very much, and yes, I understand that very well. We have set such a precedence this board over the years, as you have duly pointed out, that it's hard to deny. It's very hard to deny. We don't have a lot of affordable housing right now for folks, and in the, these are older homes, as you also pointed out, and it makes them more affordable for people to, to live in at this point in time. I do know that in the future that we will be needing commercial space. I have urged this board not to, when we have someone that wants to take a vacant lot in the commercial district and build residential there, I've urged this board not to approve that, and that was, that was a little bit difficult. But I think that that would be a good starting point. If you've got a vacant property, let's don't build a residential property on there, you know, let's try to reserve that for future commercial use is what I would like to see, you know, we can at least start there, you know, we need a starting point somewhere. But anyway, we're in discussion, is there anything else? Okay, all in favor of this special exception?
Aye.
Aye, okay, and that was by, that motion carries, and that motion, Ms. Keisha with by Commissioner Melander and second by Commissioner Allen. All right, this quasi judicial hearing is adjourned. Okay, then, we move on to new business, and this is item one under new business, approve, disapprove, request for permission to allow consumption of alcoholic beverages on city-owned property during a special event, and this is requested by the Caravelle Chamber of Commerce, and do we have someone, I see someone.
Yes.
This representative chamber to please come up and speak to us and tell us what you have planned. And identify yourselves for the record.
I'm Lori, the Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce.
Can you speak up so we can hear you on the video screen?
I'm Lori, Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce, and I'm very, very nervous.
Debbie Hahn, I'm also a board member with the Chamber of Commerce.
Hello, ladies, welcome. It's good to see you.
So, I have a little thing to tell.
Okay, just go ahead and read it, and everything will be good.
A little closer, better?
Yes.
The Chamber's been talking about having alcohol sales at our festivals for quite a while now, and because we want to raise money so that we can give it back to the community in different ways, and so we thought about trying to have a beer garden at the festival this year.
And which festival is that?
The holiday on the harbor.
Okay.
It's in December, and the board voted in favor of it, so I got busy trying to figure out what to do and where to do it. So we were looking at Wicked Willie's parking lot. We got permission to use their property, and I guess we have to get a special permit from the State of Florida, which requires zoning, see, the zoning authority governing this event location. So we need that from the city to get this permit from the state and what we're probably with.
Approval for consumption on site.
On that private property, yes.
Yes.
It's a, from the DBPR for the licensing, there's a section, I believe it's section four, which is about zoning, where it says we need zoning approval. This is private property, so at this point, we're asking for the zoning approval part of that application for the one-day special event DBPR licensing.
And, and staff normally just does that in council or other.
I don't know that we've done a special event any time recently, but we do it for businesses when they come forth getting a beer and wine license. We sign off on the zoning saying that the zoning needs the requirements of the area.
And then I believe that though you or Mr. Hartman told me that we would need to approve for temporary consumption on site.
Yes, our ordinance, just as where the city would give someone permission for onsite consumption, so that's, I think, yeah, they're.
Private property.
Private, private property, yep.
I apologize, I didn't realize you had an ordinance that also classified that, so my apologies.
That's okay, everything's okay.
I think we were just figuring that out this afternoon too, because the ordinance that I gave them was just for special events, and it was on public property.
Okay, so as Lori mentioned, originally, we threw this out there because we wanted to gain some more proceeds for the chamber so that we could reinvest it into the community. And initially, we weren't sure about the location, so we went ahead and put it on the agenda because we might want it to use city property. It turned out that we're using private, and I'm just finding out today, we need your approval, anyway, even on the private. But I did do a little proposal just to let you know a little bit about where the chamber sees this going, and if you've noticed, our festivals are getting larger and more successful, and we at the chamber are partnering and sponsoring with Harry's Bar and Package, and we're requesting that they are allowed to expand their outdoor seating during this upcoming Holiday of the Harbor Lighted Boat Parade event. The proceeds of our partners, vendors, and patrons for this event would be reinvested into the Caravelle community promoting our local businesses. Our goals are to promote our members and organizations with innovative communication methods, provide more business educational support, connections, and advocacy. We would like to progress the committee output to positively influence business and community partners, produce higher sponsorship values, and evaluate special events to strengthen the quality of life. We have visions of, you know, one day, using some of these funds towards scholarships. I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous too, Lori, believe it or not. Usually I'm not, but you guys are all new to me, so. One day, we'd like to be able to provide high school scholarships, and a lot of opportunities for businesses to get educated and be able to bring some professionals in to do lectures, and those are where some of the proceeds that we would like to see this money go to, that we raise for these kind of events. Our specifications for this request on Harry's Bar is for just this one day only, for this special event, we would like to allow them to have their outdoor seating beginning at Marine Street Grill and end at Harry's Package Store go out to the center, center medium line, just for the duration of the festival. Harry's Bar and Package will do the following. They will fence off the area, they will check all IDs and use wristbands to show patrons are over 21. The chamber and our donating partners are working together to ensure proper controls in place to ensure minors are not served alcohol. We will utilize experienced bartenders. We will have Kim, who is also here today, she will answer any questions or concerns you have concerning Harry's. The chamber will also check IDs at the beer garden area, which will be, is it called Wicked Willie's Parking Lot? It used to be Wicked Willie's. We will also ensure that our patrons are over 21, and we will also use bright wristed armbands. We also will have signage, which I did do a handout that gives examples of our signages for over 21 legal drinking age. We are also going to provide double the amount of porter potties that we use at these events. We are going to have a large dumpster, and we will have volunteers with golf carts picking up trash throughout the day along the festival footprint. We also will have First Aid EMS for Tim Keith Lucas, and that's my son's railroad call, sorry. He does plan on being at the event with the ambulance, and he's informed us at the chamber that Richard Lewis, the head of Weems, plans to continue to make a ongoing present at all our festivals, so we're happy about that. The county sheriff has assured us that the chamber will have officers at the event and assist where needed. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions or concerns.
Well, you have brought, she's brought one other item here that we weren't aware of, is the Harry's expansion, so I don't know if we, do we, do we want to address that now? Can we address that now? And that brings up a lot of questions for me.
Yeah.
But, and I want to address the beer garden serving, okay.
If I could just make a statement, and I know we're going to have a lot of discussion here, and the purpose of what you just described, I think is wonderful. I hear a lot of good things that the chamber is looking forward to doing, raising the funds and the activities and the things you, you look forward to doing. From experience, I'm going to tell you, I hesitate about the alcohol, about the beer, and the reason why I hesitate is I, in the past, I've attended many seafood festivals in Apalachico, and when they started, they allowed sale and consumption of beer inside the festival, but they discontinued that for two reasons that I know of, maybe more, but for two reasons. One is it got out of control, and the other is it took a lot away from the family atmosphere, the consumption of the alcohol without getting into detail. So that, that way, that's weighing on my mind. I mean, the purpose of what you're requesting, I think is super.
May I address those concerns?
But I just, just making a general statement, just sharing with you where my mind is at right now.
We, we do plan on keeping the garden area at the end of the festival where the food is, so, you know, everybody knows it's better to have a little food if you're going to have a beer or two.
Yes.
And then also, if we have, like on the holiday of the, I'm sorry, the harbor, we have Santa Claus, which is way up before this beer garden would be placed, and we'd like to keep it kind of classy as you can be with an actual garden. So it's not like a party atmosphere, it's more of a round tables with tablecloths and a nice little garden setting. So it's not meant for people to get drunk and party or anything like that. It's not for them to walk around, and matter of fact, they're not going to be allowed out of that area with open containers. So it's not meant to do something like that.
Could I?
Yes, sir.
I would, I would be much in favor of this, and let me re-quote just a little Bible passage here for you. Matthew 13, Jesus said, "The Son of Man came eating and drinking, and you said he was a glutton and a wine biber." Now, that's Jesus. Others would not eat or drink, or John the Baptist did not either eat or drink, and they said, "He has a demon." So just getting down to the basis of the right of an individual to do this is, is really in favor of the scriptures, and I've, I've been there, I've taught that, and I've preached it, and I think we need to, you know, we get into some of the real, and I have never reason in the world to oppose it because I lost my mother in a car wreck from a drunk driver. My nine-month-old sister was injured and died several years later from the same accident, but I think that we have a right, and the public can, and they can choose to eat it or drink it or not, or not. So I'm just in favor of that.
Well, I will want, I do want to.
I'll probably have a cross and some other on my door.
I do want to ensure, ensure all of you that our goal here isn't to promote drinking. Matter of fact, it's the opposite. We are going to have lots of signage letting people know, even parents know that it's against the law to get a beer and give it to your 17-year-old. That's a $250 fine. So we're going to make every precautions that, that we need to make to make sure that we're not promoting underage drinking and drinking responsibly. We have experienced bartenders, and Clark here from, what is it, Pub, that Florida Pub 98, who is going to donate some of the, actually, all of the beer and specialty beers for us. Thank you, Lori. And he has experienced bartenders, so we're not taking this lightly. We are using experienced bartenders that are experienced in cutting off people that have had too much, or not serving people that are coming to our, that are already intoxicated.
Yeah.
So those concerns, we're taking very, very seriously.
Okay, let me, can I speak just a moment?
Sure, I just want to make one comment and to, to respond to that. Your plans and what you're describing sounds good. And my statements made were not in opposition, it was in concern, and I hope you understand those concerns.
I still like you.
Particularly, particularly for our family atmosphere, because the location of it is going to be down there where a lot of families is going to be.
And these proceeds, I'm hoping are going to help some families here too.
But it sounds like you guys have put thorough thought into it, and you have a decent plan, and if we approve, if this is approved. And if we approve, if this is approved, I hope the best for it.
Thank you.
Now, what Commissioner Melander said, the family event, it's a fam, that is a family event, the overall event, and that was my number one concern. But I've tried to, you know, sit back, look at it, remove myself. Now, Wicked Willie's is certainly out of the 500-foot buffer, and that could open up at any time, and we could have beer and wine served there. There's not another hard liquor license available in the county yet, but certainly we could have beer and wine served there if a business would be obliged to open in there, which would be a good thing, it's a beautiful location. So I, you know, I said, "Okay, Brenda, that can happen," but it is a, this is a family event, and we're going to have a lot of families across the street, they always gather up over there, that's the hotspot to see the fireworks, the hotspot to see the boat parade. A lot of times, I don't know what you plan this year, the judges are there at the pier to judge the boat parade. And I said, "Well, if they can convince me that they are going to keep these folks inside that corral there that you're going to make with your Beer Garden, and that, you know, it's recommended that you would put some signage there that says no alcoholic beverages beyond this point, you cannot leave with alcoholic beverages, because we have an ordinance that doesn't allow, you know, walking up and down the street and, and on city-owned property as well." You know, I'm, I'm going to, I, I would consider it, but we need to remember, and I know y'all know what you put the event on, so what I want to know now, and, and we're just dealing right now with this Beer Garden down, down the way, this, Harry's expanding, that's a new, that's something that we're kind of being bombarded with here. What is the footprint going to be at the festival this year? Have y'all got that worked out yet?
Well, our lady in charge of that, she will not be back till the 3rd.
Okay.
So it is a, you know, obviously, we, we have the footprint from last year's, and part of the deal with Harry's, not to bring it into it again, but he is going to, if it is acceptable, then he is going to pay for all the vendor space that would have been used, and he is willing to donate that to the Chamber. But we are currently still working on the logistics of the foot plan, footprint for the, for the festival. But it'll be similar to last year's, except for with the addition to the Beer Garden, we're going to make sure that any family events are up, you know, closer to Avenue A, is it B, and C, so that the Beer Garden, which is, you know, on Avenue E, would be further away, and it will be a squared-off area.
And I'm just trying to get some kind of a feel what the street closure would be there.
Oh, and we have decided to move it back a little bit to 1 o'clock, so I believe in our last board meeting, it was 1 to 8.
But, oh, you wanting to close all of Marine Street, or what? Now, I can't remember how you-
Yeah, we, we usually closed Marine Street, this, before, it was earlier, it was 11, right? And this year, we're pushing it back to 1, because a lot of the vendors, the feedback was they weren't getting as many sales earlier in the day for that particular festival. Now, our other festival, forgive me, Lori, the Riverfront Festival, is different. That one, we get a lot more business throughout the whole day, but this one, because of the lighted boat parade, people, yeah, so we don't tend to get as many people until later in the day. So we decided to push it back to 1 o'clock this year, so it'd be 1 to, you know, I believe it was 6:15 that the boat parade started last year.
The festival hours one to eight.
Yeah, but we're making the official hours 1 to 8.
Then I want to ask, what are, what are, you mentioned armbands or wristbands, what, what's that for?
Those are lighted armbands that once their ID is checked at the entrance, they will have a bright armband on them, so we can identify them. But also, we do have, like I said, experienced bartenders that are also going to be IDing before they give them a drink, you know? But that's just a way that we're making sure that the people that are entering the garden have that armband, and they don't have to pull out their ID every time they actually enter the garden area.
All right. Well, y'all, are y'all going to charge like an admission to get in there, or are you going to charge per the drink?
They'll be charged per the drink.
Okay, just curious.
And, you know, that, all those proceeds will go to the Chamber, and will get reinvested back into the community.
Well, I believe that, you know, we would consider a motion that we would take these two items in two different motions.
Do we need a motion for this one?
To allow consumption on site, yes.
To sign the state license?
I think, I think the commission is charged with giving permission for consumption of alcohol on-site. And by, usually by one of the other forms of permit, but this is a special permit, but still.
And it would be temporary.
Temporary special permit, they're, they're getting, you know.
Well, I move to approve.
Okay, approve for consumption on site. Okay, so we have that by Commissioner Allen?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Melander?
Comment.
Okay, sir. We haven't approved it yet.
Still happy.
Comment. Ladies, I appreciate your presentation, and I hope the best, I hope the Chamber the best for what you have just described. It sounds very well. I see some things that could fall between the cracks, but it sounds like y'all are on the ball, and you're thinking about everything possible. And I wish you the best with it, and I hope it turns out wonderful. But, in other words, and, and just the final thing I'll say is just a word of caution on trying to keep things in perspective, if you will, as you describe, and, in a family event. And that's the last thing I'll say.
Thank you.
And thank you all for all the work that you do, not just for this event, but for all the events. You know, you're helping to lift up Carabelle, and I appreciate it. I appreciate your positive attitude and your dedication, and it's, it's just a great thing for the Chamber and for the city. And as Commissioner Melander said, and, and like I said, the very first thing I thought of, this is a family event, so we want to keep that, keep that in mind. And we appreciate you sponsoring the family event and organizing it. It's great. So, do we have any other comments? Any comments from the public? Yes, ma'am. Okay, I got, okay.
Do it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, go ahead. Do we also need approval from the zoning?
And, and yes, sir, you'll need to come to the podium. Tell me your name.
My name's Russell Howard. I just had a question on that, because I'm a parent that lives here.
Yes, sir.
Real close to the market.
Now, the last couple of years, y'all hit that train ride that goes to there. Is the kids going to ride past him and watch him drinking, or how does, how's that going to work?
Okay, Ms. Lori, if you would explain.
That's going to be way up the road from the Beer Garden.
Might be better.
That'll be way, way up the road from the Beer Garden. The kids' zone is up Marine Street. The Beer Garden is all at the end.
Okay, because I've noticed, last couple of years, they drive their whole street all the way down.
Where they can have alcohol.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah, that's how that would be, nowhere near.
For this particular request.
Right, right. I would just like to make it clear to everyone that's concerned about the family area, we are going to make sure that all family-friendly events are in the upper part of the venue, and this Beer Garden will be at the very tail end, over by, you know, across from the pavilion where Wicked Willie's Parking Lot is. And it will be, right before it is going to be the primarily food vendors, but it is squared off, just for any, you know, concerns that you might have about kids and what they would be exposed to. Again, we're not looking for a party atmosphere, it's going to be classy with round tables and nice tablecloths, and that's how it's going to be presented.
Okay, very good, and, and thank you to the manager of the Crowder Properties as well for allowing you all to do this.
Yeah, giving us the permission, that was great.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, then, is, okay, we have Chief Schuman who would like to speak just a moment. Thank you, Keith.
Hey, just got, actually got a couple of questions real quick. When she's talking about where they're having it at the Wicked Willie's, Willie's Parking Lot, that's where the fireworks are going to be at this year, if I'm not wrong. They'll be on bars right there in the river, so there's a lot of families and kids that find right now in the pavilion and, or the playground, in that area. So it won't be completely sheltered for families and kids. Is this going to be a one-time thing at this event, or is it going to be every event there for them?
I, I don't know about that.
Okay. And also too, are we blocking off all of Marine Street from 98 to the parking lot?
That's what I asked earlier, are they blocking, are they blocking the whole street? Can you tell us that?
This is a smaller festival, so it may start a little further down on Marine Street as opposed to right at 98. So maybe they'll block down, but it'll start the closure. Like most of them.
And then one other question, how do you keep people from leaving with an armband and going in and giving it to somebody else within ten?
They're usually non, they usually might, yeah.
Those armbands, once you rip it off, you can't just give it to somebody, they can get it back on. That's not how they work. I don't know if you're familiar with them, but you can't just rip them off and then attach them to somebody else. They don't work that way. And I do understand the concerns about the fireworks, and the kids are going to be there, but again, we're squared off in a parking lot, the kids are not going to be able to go into the area that we're having our little classy garden.
And, and Chief, what helped me make my decision was that this is a property where alcohol, beer and wine can be served, it really can't be denied. I mean, a business could be fully operational there right now, this very man, beer and wine being served there. So, you know, I just had to look at it from that point of view.
Sure.
And we would still be having our boat parade of lights and our fireworks, so.
Okay, yeah, I just know the last one, they had lobbies down there.
Yes, it's, it's a big thing, it's Christmas.
Holiday for, Christmas time, that's what it's, it's, that was just my question.
Okay, thank you. And we'll try to find out, you know, more and get more from the Chamber as, as time gets closer, sir.
I have a question related.
Okay.
When you can be selling beer in a can, are they going to be able to leave there with it?
No, absolutely not. We are doing the plastic cups, and they will dispose of them in the garden area, they're not allowed to carry them outside of the garden area.
Okay. I have a question for the police chief.
Good question.
Who's going to enforce this?
Well, I have not intended on enforcing it because it's never been issued, but she didn't mention the county, I think, maybe she's maybe spoken to the sheriff. I'll have it myself, we'll be out that night, and another officer on duty, so I call somebody else, and I have to pay them overtime, and, and pay them to work, so, you know, that's around that.
I do have real concerns about the alcohol, them being a family event, and I'm going to oppose it, but that's just my opinion.
The comment I had, Chief, is pretty close to what the mayor stated. You know, you, you hear my concerns, and I voice those to the ladies, and I have concerns that you have from a law enforcement standpoint. And I did hear what she said, that they had contacted the sheriff thus far, and he's going to have officers, et cetera. And I know normally during special events, you'll have someone on, extra, and we pay usually for that. And that's the reason why I make the statement that good luck with this, and, and the reason why I'm considering it, again, from what they explained, what the ladies described, and also it's on private property, and as the mayor said, it could be a business there, so it's on private property. But I do have those same concerns, and I have one other question about where Commissioner Walden brought up about the can, and the lady said it's going to be in cups. That was a big issue, the big issue in Apalachicola, besides the unruliness, was bottles, glass. And you described, you're not going to be selling anything that's in a cup, I mean, not in a cup, but in a bottle or in a can that's going to be taken outside of that garden you described.
Correct. We discussed that with our donating partners.
Right.
And, no, we are going to use plastic cups, so that, not, not only for that reason, obviously, you know, we don't want to use glass.
Correct.
We don't want to use cans, not just for the reason of them walking off with them, but you would have to crush them to make them easier to dispose of them, so cups is easier on the trash for us to pick up and get it out of the way. And I just, one more thing on, you know, I understand your concerns about the, you know, obviously, I raised two sons that are now, thank God, they just started back at college again, but I'm very concerned about family events too, because you only have so many in a community where kids can go and have fun and see Santa Claus. I completely understand that, and I think we're going to do everything we can to ensure that this is just a friendly little garden where some of the adults that, you know, their kids are off with someone else watching them and they're playing, can go and have a drink and socialize, very friendly atmosphere in a squared-off area for them to go to, and then the proceeds will get reinvested into the community, which is all good, good. But we also have experienced bartenders. We're not just using volunteers to go and give you your cup of, these are experienced bartenders that know the importance of making sure of legal drinking age, making sure that they don't serve people that have had too much, making sure that they don't serve people that come in that have already had too much. So we are using experienced bartenders, we're not just using volunteers to sell this.
Well, I hope so, because whoever your bartenders are, you say they're experienced, and that's great, but they're putting themselves, Chief Schuman helping here, they putting themselves under a big liability too, because if he catches a minor being served, that server's in trouble. So, anyway, and, and go back to the fact without hashing a whole lot of things out, with it being on private property, there could be a business there, I'm going to vote in favor of it, and I'm going to wish it a lot of support and success, and I'm willing to give it a try, but, and, and hope it's successful, but if it's a thumbs down, I want support.
I won't disappoint you, I won't be a thumbs down if we get approved.
Okay, then, I'm not going to call for a vote yet, because I want to speak to Commissioner Walden's concerns, not trying to sway your vote. I'm not.
Madam Mayor.
Now, if you want me to sway your vote, I'll sway it.
Madam Mayor.
Oh, I can give advice.
Sorry, I'm definitely, I just got an email on the next agenda item, that Mr. Sheer won't be available for, he's not going to be available for much longer.
Okay.
He asked that we call, put him on speaker as soon as we can.
Okay, all right, we'll do that here shortly. But if, if you have your Harry's and your Fathoms in the other one, and that other one, and the other one, then they're all going to, there's a possibility that they'll all walk out with a drink or, you know, a little bit inebriated, so, I mean, this isn't the only location that, that, that can happen. And like, as Commissioner Melander said, I'll give it a try, since, you know, a business could be operating there anyway, and you're going to have experienced bartenders, and, and, you know, if you see you can't handle it, you may need to, to shut her down, but just give it a try and see what happens.
Yeah, because alcohol would not be allowed, allowed outside of that general area. The same thing with Harry's, I mean, there's not alcohol allowed outside by city ordinance.
Right.
Which other thing, you know, if Harry's is going to be happening tonight, why isn't the Beer Garden? I mean, I understand it's for profit, it's a neighbor commerce and citizens of Carabelle, but that's another thing, you know? That business already hit them on the same street, not half blocks from that.
That is between, they, the, Harry's is a member of the Chamber?
Yeah.
And that's between the Chamber and the Harry's? That's their, their thing. At first I thought that, you know, they-
Just observation.
Yeah. Okay, all right, then, well, can I go ahead and call for a vote then? Are we ready? Do we have any other questions or discussion? Okay, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, all right. I thank you all for your discussion and presentation regarding the Harry's expansion, outdoor seating. We need to move on to this next, this next item is very important to myself, I know, and, and I think it's important to a couple of other commissioners. We can either, we can come back to this, or ask Harry's to come and put in a- We can either, we can come back to this or ask Harries to come and put an item on the agenda to ask to use the street.
Will they be able to do that within 90 days?
They have to ask for 90 days in advance. And that's kind of why when the chamber first came to us last Friday...
Well, that was for the, that was for the, oh, okay, that would be, yes. They've got to do that to use the street? To use public property. Okay.
So when they came, when the chamber came to us last Friday, they began to, they, to begin with, they came to us wanting to use maybe public property, like maybe the pavilion. But they haven't really nailed down a location. And then there was some talk about them partnering with Harries. And so we left it on, and at the time, we didn't think that they had to get permission to use the Wicked Willys parking lot. So we left it on the agenda. So that's up to you guys for discussion.
All right, let's table this item for further discussion after we complete item two. All right?
But they did have to request it within 90 days is what the...
This was the last month to get it in?
For the, now, I'm talking about expanding Harries out to the street. With the city property.
90 days.
All right. So, that's right, you read that one, Mr.?
Yes.
Okay. So let's table this other item here that was not on the agenda for further discussion to see if we want to take this up after we address Mr. Shear under item two. We really need to talk to him.
When the chamber requested for this to be on the agenda, Harries was, it was either Harries or this other location. They weren't sure at the time when they requested it.
Let's table this item. I'm going to motion to table this item until after item two. Okay. Do we have, any further discussion on this table? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries, and we will take this back up as soon as we deal with item two. Thank you. All right, item two, under new business, discussion of possible action concerning complaints, excuse me, concerning complaints regarding the proposed new river landing. And hello, Mr. Shear. Thank you very much for waiting on the phone. This is Mayor La Paz. We've got Commissioner Melander, Commissioner Walden, Commissioner Allen, and Commissioner Brown with us. We've had some concerns expressed to us at our last commission meeting and also here tonight regarding the Jordan Bayou project that has been brought out to us. And it's giving us concern regarding your proposed new river landing project here in Carabelle as well.
Yes. Well, good evening and thank you for pulling me in so we can discuss a few troubling facts that I've uncovered and a few items that have given me some concern as well. And I think some explanation will go along for everyone's benefit. So I am here to answer any questions. And I can give a quick, just overview of the concerns that I'm hearing and, you know, some information kind of around that. So I'll open it up back to you guys, and you tell me if there's anything specific. Or I can start out by giving some context and an overview of where we're at addressing some of the items that have been raised.
Please do.
Okay, certainly. And the city could code-enforce it. I don't know if it's been code-enforced or not, but the weeds out there at Jordan Bayou, you know, that's waist-high. And then a lot of folks are concerned as well regarding the construction of the building. But we here at the city, we understand that that was between the developer and the building inspector, that the developer hired an individual building inspector that was not affiliated with the city of Carabelle and not affiliated with the Franklin County government. So that's, and that is also between, if there's anything wrong with the building or something's happening on the inside of the property, we understand that's between the lessy and lessor. But we're taking, we're fielding staff and ourselves, as the commission members are fielding, a lot of complaints and questions regarding that and how that project is being managed. And, you know, it gives me grave concerns regarding moving forward with the next project in Carabelle and what we may be faced with.
Yep. You've given me a lot to go off, so I will kind of take each of one of, each of those in kind of order of what I just made note of. Just to kind of start out, that this development is completely different in a few respects, material respects, to the New River Landing project. Because it seems like this, this item is being discussed about Jordan Bayou, but it pertains to the approvals in front of you for New River Landing. And New River Landing is a completely different development in the sense that it is a singular parcel of land where we are, as you will see in the civil plans that have been approved or are under review right now, we are raising the entire site, filling in the site to bring the paving and the building paths all above the minimum base flood elevation. That's very different than you have at Jordan Bayou where you have individual homes on varying heights on piers. The reason that that is different is because you will see that each individual home at Jordan Bayou was split up. We inherited, we acquired a defunct development from 2008 when a developer had failed to complete the project after putting in their infrastructure, making improvements to the paving, effectively having the site pad-ready. 2008 was a very different time when it came to the flood zones. At the time, they could have built every single one of those homes at Jordan Bayou flat on the ground on a typical traditional building clad that was a slab of concrete on the grade surface. That was not an option for Jordan Bayou because we have different flood elevations over the years that have been developed, and for good reason. And so we've had to raise those parcels, those individual homes, as you see at the property, at varying heights, to address potential flooding issues and to address flood insurance matters that would otherwise be imposed if you were below that base flood elevation, if your finished floor was below the base flood. So comparison to New River Landing, that is not, that is not the case. We have one individual site. All the homes are in a very, very uniform and efficient drive. So there's a double-loaded drive, and there's a drive aisle that goes both directions for cars. And there's homes on either side, like a traditional, a traditional street, traditional neighborhood street. And it wraps around in one direction and goes out to barefoot lanes. So it's basically a L-shaped drive aisle that is double-loaded with units on each side. And the elevation of that in every home is elevated so that there is a slab on grade and not any piers. So that allows us to do a few things. That allows us to put it in the irrigation system where I don't have at Jordan Bayou that luxury because I have homes that are split up throughout the development. And the parcels that we built the homes on at Jordan Bayou were distinctly selected because they were the ones that were most accommodating for the size of the home that we were building. A lot of those lots are very small. They're not uniform sized. They're, you know, typically a neighborhood will have 7,500 square foot individual lots. If you look at Jordan Bayou, each of those parcels, there was 58 of them within the 39-acre site. They're all a varying size, which makes, you know, the selection that we had, we had to choose the best site, the best lots to put the individual homes on. So that's why they're not all congregated together. We wouldn't have been able to fit the 1,236-square-foot home on any one particular parcel. So that's a big distinction between New River Landing and Jordan Bayou as well. So New River Landing will allow us to elevate the site, have one uniform grade across the site, 30 individual, single-family, two-bedroom homes, in this case, not three-bedroom, and I can explain why. We decided to go with two bedrooms, if you'd like. But the upshot there is that it's an irrigated site, and it will be able to take on seed and sod to establish rooted grass. The problem with Jordan Bayou that frankly I was not aware of is that the soil is so sandy there, and there is not enough irrigation to take and have grass take. It would be extremely difficult to get centipede grass to actually grow on the site to establish the roots. So what you have is, you know, effectively this very sandy soil with a lot of weeds. And then to the point of the growth of the site, we had initially had, in every single lease that has been signed, every lessy has agreed to maintain their yards. We have offered, and this may not have been available upfront, so I will make that disclaimer, but there is now lawn equipment that's available for checkout. And every resident has the ability to talk to the management agent. They have a system in place, check out that equipment, weed whacker, lawnmower, and maintain their yard. But that didn't happen. We just have a single resident take advantage of that program, and none of them had lived by the terms of their lease to maintain that facility. So we are now doing that for them. So that is the response. We heard the complaint. We weren't aware of how bad it was. I saw the pictures, and I absolutely agree. It was completely unacceptable. It was completely unacceptable for us as owners and operators of the property. And we've had that really quick discussion and stern discussion with our property management agent. And as the residents should tell you, we've already got a landscape crew that's out there. The landscape crew couldn't finish the job, unfortunately, and they're coming back, I think it's tomorrow, because they had the equipment that kept getting stuck in the sand. So they did clear some of the sites, and, you know, you can see that if you drove out there. They're coming back to finish the rest of them with the right equipment. So everyone's lawn will be cut down. The weeds will be trimmed. The scope of services includes cutting down the weeds, removing that, applying weed killer, so bootlogging it, providing safe weed killer that is going to, you know, take it down to the root, destroys the root, so we don't have as quick of a growth backup. Got a good rainfall, you know, that stuff grows back very quickly. So the hope is that that does not, that will deter it. We are looking at options to plant, to bring in pine straw and/or do some additional plantings. Unfortunately, I just don't see how centipede grass is going to take there. We've talked to numerous nurseries and to landscapers about how we can get some grass cover. And it's, you know, inherently impossible. As you'll see in many areas of Carabelle and Franklin County, there's not a lot of grass cover because it is so difficult to get it rooted and started. So I don't know if there's anything we can do about that in all candor to be able to put a really good bed of grass in front of it. I wish we could. That's the look that I want. I would love to deliver that for the residents and their satisfaction and be able to deliver something that's aesthetically more pleasing, that they can get some use out of a nice lawn. But I don't think that's going to be the case, so we're looking at alternatives to address that. The other thing I'd heard was that there was building defects. The property management company has now posted on every single door, has sent text messages, and has called individual residents. And they're getting, they're getting some response, but there's a lot of residents who haven't responded, asking every resident to email or go to the office with a list of the defects that they're experiencing. So if they have a plumbing issue, if they're missing a screen, if they have some caulking that's missing, whatever those building defects are, we need to know about them before we can fix them. We have a contractor who built this project for us. That contractor has a warranty on the project, and we want to be able, it's one year, and we're coming up on that pretty shortly. Talked to the contractor. He said, "Tell me what the issues are. Let's do a survey, get an inventory of the issues. We will get our subcontractors out there to fix it." So we have their, we have their coordination. We need the residents to step up and provide the information. We will have then our maintenance person and/or our construction team go out, just verify through a quick inspection that the deficiency is there, the defect's there, and you will see action on that. But it takes response from the residents, and we hope that they continue to talk to the management company about these issues. Going forward, you're going to have issues. This is, you know, if you live in the, if you live in a home, you may have issues from time to time. Stay in touch with the management company. But we are happy and willing and able, at this point, to address some of the defects that I'd heard on the last YouTube video of the city council meeting. I'd heard some of those issues. And those are, those are not uncommon issues. We can address most of those, and we just need, we need the communication. When it comes to the management company, you know, I personally can't speak for them. I know that they are trying. It is a tough environment. Anybody who wants a job in property management, please let me know because we need, we need some help out there. It's a big site to cover. We've lost our maintenance guy a couple times over. The management, the manager has now changed as well. We're visibly making improvements. We're trying to find the right personnel. But it's tough to do in today's environment to find people who want to work, who want to be on our site. And it's, you know, it's hard to find those individuals who are local and close enough, whether it's Apalachicola, Crawfordsville, somewhere in McCullough. You know, we're looking all across there to try to find individuals to come and be part of our management team to the benefit of the community. We have a management, we just, I just got the date, September 13th. The management company will be hosting a community meeting. We want this to be a community, not just a place where people live. And that's how we operate all of our properties. We provide a community environment, and we need to have people come together. One, just to know and socialize, be able to know each other, because that creates a good sense of community. This needs to be a cordial environment. So we want to open up the floor. This is not meant to come in and just express all of your complaints, but to try to help us understand how we can make this a better community and full operations. Not everything's going to be perfect. And I want to make one very important point. This is not a single-family home development. You're renting an individual house from an individual investor who bought that home or used to live there and now moved and is renting out their home. This is one large community made up of 39 single-family homes and one clubhouse and common areas around there. There is one loan on this property. There is one regulatory agreement on this property. It's operated at a level with a lot of oversight from the state, from our lenders. We have conditions and covenants in these leases that must be adhered to or we will lose the property and violate our covenant. So I've heard about the pool. I've heard about dilapidated cars. I've heard about couches and debris and other things that are being stored in the front of the homes, political signs. You know, this is not a, again, this is not a single-family home that you own. You have to be respective of our rules to live in this community. And those rules are given to the residents. They acknowledge those rules when they sign a lease. And unfortunately, we're not able to change those rules. So if it's too cumbersome for an individual, they should really look at alternative housing options. This development does lease for about 30% less than a single-family home that is by no means probably as new as these homes and is good condition. So there is a big advantage to this housing that we're providing. There's a significant discount given, you know, given the quality of the product. But there are rules that come with that. And I just want everyone to be cognizant that this isn't us singling out any individuals. This isn't us taking a personal attack on anybody. These rules apply across the board. And if they're not applying across the board, that's what I want to hear because that's what I can fix. But it's, again, I just want to be clear for everybody who's listening. Anything that has come through management as a requirement or request to remove something or to keep your household in a certain manner, that is a condition that's imposed on everybody, and it's not to single anybody out. So I hope everyone understands that, that this is not an attack on any one individual or any group of individuals. So what else can I tell you? The management company is trying. I've been in close communication with them. We are continuing to work through some of these issues. We want to provide a good residential community. This property currently is, you know, on the tax rolls. We are adding cap space to the county. It is providing affordable housing that is still much lower than the rate you would pay at a comparable, single-family, new home in the area, significantly lower. And so with those benefits, we hope we get the cooperation... And so with those benefits, we hope we get the cooperation of residents to work in an orderly manner with our management staff and to establish what is more of a community than individuals living in single-family homes, because that is just not the type of product this is intended to provide. So I'll stop rambling, and we do want to work with the city. We're sorry that you're fielding these complaints, that is not your, really not your role, and you guys shouldn't be caught in the middle here. So I want to apologize to all the council members and to Mayor Lopez for, you know, the inconveniences of this, but I do appreciate the communication, and you guys have been great to work with. And New River Landing does have some critical differences that I think you'll see are going to operate the property in just a more, just a better manner as a result of some of these physical characteristics and so forth that I mentioned. It's just an easier property to manage and maintain overall.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, and thank you, Mr. Shear, for your explanation there. We had a member of the public that wanted to speak. Did you still want to speak? Okay, please come forward, you know, so he can hear you on the microphone and identify yourself again. Please, ma'am.
Hello, Mr. Shear. I'm Sharon Glaze, the one with the political signs that they want to take him down. I don't have any opposition to that. What I do have opposition to is I have two leases, copies of which are on my telephone right now, both different, and both of them state that they are to maintain their landscaping once the landscaping is complete. And when I went out there to talk to the manager about that, she tried to tell me that the landscaping was done when they moved in, and it's their fault for not maintaining it. But there's not one blade of grass out there, and I don't believe that the pictures that I have on my phone of when people were moving in, there was just dirt, no landscaping at all. As far as getting them equipment that they're going to check out and check back in, what about the people that live way in the back? How are they going to get that equipment to their house? Are they going to just drive? Is it a riding lawnmower that they can drive to their home? Are they going to be responsible bringing a truck? They have no permission to do storage sheds, they can't do anything but keep a tarp over their own equipment. And I think we have bigger issues here because the insulation is falling underneath the houses. I've been in several of the houses, the ceilings are cracked. One, I have a lot of text messages and emails on my phone where one person had actually filed five complaints. And then they're asking her to do another one, which I understand since you're ready to address them now, but they have been. I have lists of that they had written and turned in to management. And I would also like to say that when I was out there trying to figure out what could be a solution, how to help these people, I want you to know that this is the honest truth, I would not exaggerate or lie about this. That manager had the audacity to say to me that I did not know where those people came from. And what I said to that manager is, you know, and I'm sorry, but I hear you saying what, you know, you're giving them so much, so much that they wouldn't have had before. You do not offer to help people and then expect them to eat out of a pig trough. So when you've built these houses, they had every right to expect what they were offered. They had every right to have a decent place to live. There's one exit going in and a 36-inch window going out, and as you know, they're on concrete blocks, and a lady with four little babies is going to have to throw a baby out of a window in case of a fire. You didn't create a ladder system for them to protect their children. And one lady has broken her leg in three places, and she has a lawsuit against Jordan Bayou. That's because the sand wasn't even graded when she moved in. So I'm sorry, but I'm just trying to be objective, and we have a lot of people here living in poverty, and I don't think it's fair to put them in a lower standard like that. They deserve better than they're getting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Glaze. Okay, thank you. I would, now, really, this item, what we are actually discussing here is our issues that would be between the lessee and the lessor. And this is not something that the city would necessarily take up unless there's some type of actual code enforcement, which would be grass or furniture thrown all over the place where, you know, somebody's been evicted or something. And I did, I was out there today, and I see their garbage cans, the bears are into the garbage cans, and trash is spread out pretty good, the way we know that bears can do that possibly. This is, all these things can hopefully be worked out at their community meeting that they have on the 13th. How are they going to get their grass mowed? I know that some of the people I know personally there are disabled, and they can't mow grass or take care of their yard. They're in that affordable housing complex because they are disabled and they're on a lower income, and that's what's qualifying them to be there. So that needs to be worked out, as well as how, you know, maybe they need bear-proof garbage cans, and they need to let the management know or the developer. But all of these things should be managed at their community meeting. That is what I talk about, is a gated community, but, you know, it's not, there's no gate, but it's a separate community there and is managed by the property manager through the developer, which is McDowell Housing.
Mayor, may I address one thing? May I have a second?
Certainly.
Just in regards to the landscaping, because that seems to be the big one, and I'm personally, you know, disheartened by the fact that this grass has gotten so crazy out there and nothing's been done about it. So I would, you know, I wouldn't want to live there and deal with that and have to walk through that, and I'm sure that means more mosquitoes and other, you know, bugs running around. I completely get it, and I sympathize with the residents on that front. So what we've had is basically a failed attempt, a failed experiment, if you will, to provide some requirements for the lessees to maintain their house, because in a traditional, single-family rental agreement, in many cases, those residents are responsible. If you're renting a single-family home on Ray's Avenue, that you're responsible for maintaining that yard in many cases. So that was the intention there, and we thought that would work out, it clearly isn't. So we are going to take that responsibility back over. We are going to take the time to, at the expense, to take down, you know, the grass that's currently there, apply the weed killer, try to find some covering that's going to keep the weeds down. I don't think we're ever going to be able to grow grass, but we will maintain the yards on a more frequent level to make sure that they're at least kept, you know, in a condition that is, you know, hospitable for residents. So there's not weeds that are knee-high. I think that's unacceptable, and I completely agree with the residents who complained about that. So just note, that is going to be happening, there's going to be regular and routine landscaping that will occur. Now, I will say, just to be very clear on that, we do have a lot of areas that are between homes where we are not intending to, we'll probably bush hog those every, you know, every few months, maybe every quarter, it depends on the growth, that'll be an as-needed basis. So do not expect that we're going to, they were going to maintain 39 acres in total. It's going to be in front of the individual homes. So I just wanted to make that clear, that we agree with you, and we are taking on the expense and the responsibility to maintain everyone's front yards to have a more respectable entrance to your homes.
Commissioner Melander would like to speak, and then we have someone from the public that would like to speak as well. Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Shear, this is Commissioner Melander. I had a lot of concerns, and you have covered some of those, and I appreciate your response verbally that you have committed to attend to with your management company. I don't profess to get into your business. I, for one, would appreciate a positive response on these housing needs, and I'm sure the meeting on the 13th, that'll be handled between yourself or your associates and your management company and the residents. And on the maintenance of the road shoulders and the yards, front yards, et cetera. I'm 69 years old, and I've lived in this area all my life, and you talk about growing grass. The best hardy grass that is most popular, even on road shoulders and roadways in the state of Florida, is behaag grass. I've never heard you mention that. And even at your current office over there, your management office or whatever you call your building when you enter. Okay, that grass is growing very pretty right there. You said you don't have an irrigation system, but that appears to be, not saying Augustine, but...
Yep.
What is it?
I think it's centipede.
Centipede, that's right. It appears to be centipede. And centipede does do fairly well, but that's growing very well right there around your office. And if you haven't experienced the sand, I don't know that I'd take weed killer. Now, I'm not trying to tell you what to do and kill the weeds. You need a root system in that grass to try to hold it in place. However, you don't have to let the weeds grow up till they waist-high or neck-high. They can be manicured, they can be trimmed and cut just like regular behaag grass or any other grass. But anyway, I'll finish what I'm saying by, I appreciate your response and the things that you're saying that you're on top of, and I won't reiterate the needs over there, and we appreciate your attention. Thank you.
Okay, and then we have...
Thank you, Commissioner, and I appreciate the comment on the behaag grass that we are looking at, and I don't profess to know the differences between each of these grass types, but we are looking at the options to try to find a grass that will take. We're going to, we can't irrigate, so we have to do it at the right time, and we probably have to have water trucks like we did for the clubhouse to get that root established. So it's definitely something we're thinking about, and we're going to find one way or another just to keep, you know, put some covering so we don't have the continued growth of weeds. I can't promise that exactly what there is, but there will be something that will address over the sand.
All right. Mr. Shear, we have a gentleman that would like to speak now under public comment.
Good evening, Mr. Shear. And I, first of all, want to say...
Identify yourself, please.
My name, I'm Vance Pedrick. Sorry, you're on the phone. I just want to take the opportunity to say thank you. As the property owner and everything, you do not have to take time out of your busy day to do what you are doing here for these residents and these concerns. But I also like to note that the action that you take with Jordan Bayou, because the agenda items is, you know, complaints regarding proposed New River Landing, the actions that you showed are, citizens of the city as well as the board will speak highly of what we can expect for New River's landing. So I do appreciate you taking the time to address these, and hopefully, as a city and a commission, we can see the work of your actions. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Pedrick. And Mr. Shear, that, I need to reiterate that, and I've said first off that I was disappointed, and that I have grave concerns regarding moving towards the next project, and that when I look at this, I go out there and I look at the, it's a worrisome example, that I look at that, it's a worrisome example, and I'm, you know, the staff, like I said earlier, is fielding these complaints from these citizens who really need to be complaining to their property manager or the lessee, and then we're fielding the complaints and being blamed for a lot that's happening out there, and especially blamed for the building inspections that the city had absolutely nothing to do with. And so, and I do too appreciate you taking time out tonight like this and waiting on the phone, and we understand that you had just a certain amount of time, so that's why we tabled our last item to take you on here now. But like I say, it's a worrisome example, and moving forward to the next New River Landing project, and you did explain how that was going to happen with raising the ground up and that you will be able to put sod or centipede or something along those lines and maintain the outside of that project better. And this is a learning experience. We've got folks here now that are renters that are not accustomed to taking care, you know, doing their own yards, and maybe we can come up with some different solution for that. So is there any other comment from the... Okay, thank you. Is there any other comment from the commission? Anything else, any other comment from the public? Okay, Mr. Shear, I'll give you the last word then.
Well, thank you again for giving me the opportunity to address the council as well as your residents. You know, nothing happens overnight, so please be patient with us addressing these issues, but they are 100% heard loud and clear. We want to operate the property in a way that we have a good community who has a safe, sustainable, quality place to live. That's always our goal. And we want to continue to deliver new housing options to the city of Carabel. We have a different development altogether, so please keep in mind the differences between those two properties and from an operational perspective. We are going to take over the lawn and maintenance, both at Jordan Bayou as well as on New River Landing. So that seems to be one of the biggest complaints that we're hearing, and it will be addressed going forward without inconvenience to the residents. And we hope that we can ultimately find a way to have a home that a resident can be proud of. So thank you for your time. If there's any other issues that you'd like to contact me about on the New River Landing project, any details, I'm happy to present that, you know, directly to council or staff or to, you know, a community meeting as well. It's not unusual for us to host a community meeting just to show what we're doing, what we're built, who it's going to serve. The one difference on that project is it is a two-bedroom unit, not a three-bedroom unit. We found that due to the income restrictions, two-bedroom units have a larger and broader tenant base that can be satisfied. Three-bedroom units end up becoming prohibitive because as you add more household individuals, the income levels do not go up. So if you have two working adults, you often exceed the income requirements for the three-bedroom. So it's a little bit different program, and it should serve a larger fan of the residents that you have as well as the unrestricted units. There's still nine market-rate units that I think are desperately needed in the community for those who aren't able to qualify. So we appreciate, you know, your consideration, and we're willing to continue to make an investment in the city of Carabel, and it has been a significant investment to date, and we're willing to move that forward if you're able to approve our New River Landing project. We'd appreciate that consideration.
Okay, I believe that we have approved that and that we're scheduled to sign the final agreement by October 8th. So I don't, Mr. Hartman, there's no action required here tonight, then?
No action required.
Okay, and we just want to thank you again, and then also, Mr. Shear, thank you for reiterating on the nine unrestricted income units that will be available in the New River Landing. That's much needed in the area. Okay, we'll let you go then, Mr. Shear, and thank you for answering our questions and addressing our concerns.
You're welcome. Have a great evening, ladies.
Okay, all right. Good night, thank you. All right, then, I want to, we might need a recess, but I don't want to recess. I want to go right back to item one, and I want to give the floor to Commissioner Brown. She had the floor, so I want to go ahead and give the floor to you. You were explaining about, do you remember? Okay, go ahead then.
I was just saying that this was part of the agenda item. It wasn't snuck in or anything like that. When they requested the item to be on the agenda, they were still working out their plans, so it was part of the agenda.
Okay, now, I did go over and speak with Ms. Laurie, and she didn't mention anything about that to me. And I did speak to Courtney and Keisha in detail, and they didn't mention anything about the Harrys wanting to expand out into the street. So for me personally, it was a surprise to me. I had no idea that that was part of the proposal, and, you know, I don't know what to say about that, but... you know, I don't know what to say about that. But I'll leave this up to, you know, other comments from the commissioner. Ms. Kim left. I guess she couldn't stay either. But these kind of things, you know, our meetings sometimes run late. It's out of our control. Mr. Shear had emailed Mr. Hartman and said that he could not wait much longer. And we did need to speak to Mr. Shear. In fact, this board requested him to call us last month. So what, since Ms. Brown, can you tell us then what Harrys is requesting? Or can Laurie tell us? Can you come and tell us what they're requesting?
Yeah.
I did talk to Mr. Henry, the owner of Harrys.
Uh-huh.
And he was interested in partnering with the Chamber. Because at the time, they weren't sure what their options would be for a beer garden. So they were looking at ways to fundraise and whatnot. I have a relationship with Harrys owners, so I said I'd go talk to them and see what their thoughts were. And they are requesting that they just extend, I'm sorry, extend their outdoor seating. He's going to provide adequate fencing and security to obviously check IDs, just like they normally would. But this would just extend more onto the city property than the sidewalk. Because all of the businesses downtown extend onto the roadway during this time, and they're basically asking to do the same thing.
Now, he's, I see the drawing. He wants to go out to the middle of the street. Now, some of the businesses, like I know your business, Commissioner Brown, extends out into the parking area, not into the middle.
Right. I have, my parking area is a little wider because we have the, I don't know what kind of parking you call that, but it's not the parallel.
Yeah.
Angle.
Right, diagonal.
Yeah. So this is what he told me would be preferable from one end of their, the start of the Marine Street Grill to the end of Harrys package would be preferable. And he's going to bring out an extra pizza oven to serve more food so that his kitchen doesn't get overwhelmed.
And then...
And we would have tables and tents and things like that out there.
Ms. Laurie, now, for your regular vendors, they don't come out into the middle of the street, do they? They just take up the parking spaces?
It's usually the parking space, yeah. They don't go into the middle of the road.
And now, this area will be closed to, you're not going to have this open to traffic, is that correct?
Correct.
Oh, just...
Park's gonna talk. He is from the, that ninety, that four above on ninety-eight.
Okay, if you'll just identify.
He's the one donating all of the alcohol.
You're donating all the alcohol?
Yes. His pub.
What's your name?
Yes, ma'am. My name is Paul Lincoln Burke. My plan, I am opening that four above on ninety-eight. That's gonna be in the Old Two Owls Building by the beach. I don't know if you are familiar.
And you can bring that up, so you...
Sounds good. I might squeak it down. It's fine. I'd be standing all day at this point. So I was talking with my coworker back there, and they said, you know, if we had to compromise, instead of it coming all the way out to the median, just coming out to where the parking spaces are, it's still an extension of enough out to have more tables, but it's not taking all the way up in the street.
Gentlemen?
(knocking)
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
Oh, that's it. I was just saying, like, if we had to compromise for this thing, what we're talking about, instead of going all the way out to the median, just coming out to the end of the parking spaces, if that makes sense.
Now, what kind of, where is the, you were talking earlier, Ms. Laurie, about all of the kid, all of the family related, the children, the train and all of this stuff. Now, where is that going to be in relation to this proposal?
We're just in the beginning of laying out the footprint. We have the kids' son, which usually consists of the bouncy house, the hurry train, those two so far. They're usually up near between B and C, closer to C probably.
The bouncy house is usually on the corner of C?
The corner of C. So that will be there again. And then the train usually rides around that same area.
Okay.
On C and Marine.
And I will remind the board that we've already allowed sidewalk encroachment. So there will be seating and eating and drinking on the sidewalk, I'm sure. I'm sure about that, because that's part of their, our agreement with them.
As you can see on the map, where normally we have festival booths, that is what we're proposing as a compromise, that they only extend out that far, which again, they're willing to donate the expenses that we would, well, I'm sorry, the proceeds that we would normally get from vendors that would have those spaces. So that's why we're kind of proposing it. Really, it benefits the Chamber. It's not so much that we're pushing something for Harrys. But the other issues, again, about the children, is we're in the beginning stages of planning our footprint for the festival. So we're gonna make accommodations where we make sure that our kids' area, I mean, it might be a good thing for us, because maybe we'll decide to completely move all kid areas to one area and have the train only drive around that particular area. I know at one time, we did the park, where we actually had the train go over to the park and circle the park, which was very popular with the kids. And, you know, that could be one idea that we could bring up at our next meeting to make it, you know, even more kid-friendly for that event. Maybe we can move Santa, in other words, over there. I didn't mean to quiet the room.
But you did.
We're contemplating now.
And we're tired.
Yeah. But we've got a ways to go. So we are contemplating this, you know. Well, you know, he, basically, he's leasing, would want to just basically lease those spaces from you. You know, that's it.
Yes.
As if any other vendor was there.
Yes. Yeah, you could actually consider it that way. Yeah, absolutely. If we do the compromise, because I do see, you know, extending it out to the median could affect the flow too of our patrons. So I think maybe it's a good idea to compromise and just extend it out to where the, where we normally have vendors sitting anyway. I think that would be a really good compromise. And then, yeah, you could basically say he's paying for those vendor spaces.
Well, you know, if, if any of the businesses paid for those vendor spaces, that's, that's no different than anyone else.
That's right.
The only thing in question is, is the serving of alcohol.
Or to the city property.
Well, they're doing it now on the sidewalk.
Yeah, we gave them an agreement to do that.
To do that, yeah. And, well.
I know it.
I'll make a motion.
With the blue is...
Okay, all right.
No, 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 I'm good, I'm good with the taking the parking.
Yeah.
But not, not out to the center line.
Where the booths would normally be.
Yes, okay, Chief.
But that's where your problem's a lot, because that's city property. And there's no alcohol beverage law on city property. So that's where, that's where your issue's from, isn't it?
Except for a special permit with permission from the board, I mean, a special event with permission from the board.
Yeah, but if somebody's still drunk and disorderly in public, there, that's the...
The sidewalk is also city property, and we gave them permission to...
Right, but it was under a special exception.
That's what they're asking for.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm looking all the way to the city and Marine Street, because you're cutting the flow off.
We're not gonna, we won't consider that.
That's what I said, Chief. I'm not available. I mean, I'm not interested in going to the center of the road, just the parking spot.
And really going onto, onto city property, I mean, we took a big step by going onto the sidewalk, and that was a temporary agreement. We, as far as I know, this board has never approved alcohol service in any city parks. We've had the Florida, excuse me, the Leon County Bar Association or Talahasi, one of them, came and wanted to have a alcohol party, boat party there, at the pavilion, Marine Street. And we denied that. We told them that they could go ahead and get the permission like you did. That would be fine, and we would allow that on the Wicked Willie's parking lot. But no. And so, this is, this would be a big step for us to allow alcohol consumption on the city street now.
Just my thoughts on it.
Okay. And the parking, now, we, I don't, I don't agree with going out to the middle of the street either. I mean, you just wouldn't leave enough space in case an emergency vehicle had to get through. And, you know, you'd be, you know, you'd be pushing it there.
Do you want to read it or do you...
Y'all?
I don't.
And this is just for that one event?
Special event.
Then we're taking a chance. Now, let me rephrase that. We're experimenting.
There haven't been any complaints since they've gone onto the sidewalk. I mean, I live across the street. They're doing a great job containing it as of right now. And I don't see any reason why that wouldn't continue during a special event, because they've been here forever. They're not trying to upset anyone or get in trouble. You know, they're a longstanding business in downtown Carabelle that wants to succeed and wants Carabelle to succeed. So I have no doubts about this.
Okay. Did you want to speak?
Yes, ma'am, but I was waiting my turn.
Okay.
I didn't want you to yell at me.
I didn't.
Oh, I'm sorry. Now you got it. Vance Pedrick. The board has took a great experiment with Wicked Willie's, which we understand can open tomorrow and serve alcohol. But something unusual here is it's actually gonna all be outside. Most of the time, it's inside of Billy. You already are serving alcohol on sidewalks. And now by extending it, you are putting alcohol on both ends with family in the middle. So that would be my only caution, is how much of an experiment do we want to go? Do we want to take it slow, do Wicked Willie's parking lot, what they have on the sidewalk? Hey, if it goes great, maybe next year we think about extending. But we're doing a whole lot more than we ever have as a city. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay. Did you want to speak, Ms. Tim?
No, I didn't.
Oh. But, you know, and it is, it is a big experiment.
So sleep, sleep.
And we're, we're, we're going to sleep now. We're, we are experimenting right now with the sidewalk service. We're watching that very closely. I've had some discussions with Mr. Shawn myself regarding that and getting that straightened out there, because we were having a little bit of a problem on the keep, maintaining the four-foot pathway. So we know we don't want to go out to the middle of the street, certainly. Do we want to just do our little experiment like we approved now? I mean, I, you know, one or the other. I mean, I'm just, I just...
I think, Mr. Pedrick, I think, are we going too far here if we do that? We already got them on the sidewalk. Pretty much, we don't have to prove it to go out further. We want to keep doing this.
Well, we can't put booths in front of that spot anyway. And every other business on Marine Street, Avenue B, we're all extending out during that festival. It's gonna be there regardless.
I like, I like keep saying, all these mamas and daddies and grandmas and granddads and little kids going down through there.
They're gonna, they're already outside.
I understand he owns a business. He's, he's got a right to run his business. But now, we own the street. So do we want to go there? I mean, that's where we at.
I know it. That's where we, we are. And where, are you going to have, the churches have their booths like they normally do as well? Where will they be placed?
We usually just kind of sporadically place them, because they usually give out water and snacks. And so we kind of spread them out, throw out.
Okay, I'm not really here to like go after this battle. But I will say that I think that we have an opportunity, if you want to call it an experiment, then we can experiment as well with where we put the non-for-profit churches, where we put the train, where we put the bouncy house, the pirate show. Or maybe we might want to think, meaning the Chamber, of doing a location that's not right in that main thorough way, where we have the kids in the Avenue C area and combine it all together somewhat. And I think that, you know, we would look at that ourselves in our next meeting and propose something that maybe we'd make some changes ourselves. Because as I mentioned in the beginning, this is growing. We're very happy that it's growing. And, you know, with the riverfront getting polished up and beautiful, we hope to, you know, someday be able to incorporate that into the festivals. So, but we also want to keep it very family-friendly and very community-orientated. So, you know, I think that if you don't like what happens, which I don't think's gonna be the case after December 10th, because the date is December 10th, then, you know, I certainly won't be here next time asking you.
I would like to make a motion that we extend Harrys outdoor seating for the duration of the Holiday on the Harbor event on December 10th to include, to start at the beginning of the property line of Marine Street Grill, end at the property line at the package, Harrys package, and extend out into the city road of Marine Street as far as the normal tents, vendor tents would be. I believe it's 10 feet.
It is. It's just the, the parking area.
Would you go over that one more time?
You got it, Keisha?
Yes. I got it.
Never mind. Keisha got it.
Okay, so we have this motion by Commissioner Brown to extend Harrys outdoor seating from one end of their property line to the other end of their property line, and extend that outdoor seating to the edge of the 10-foot parking spaces. Pretty much that's what you said. And we have that motion by Commissioner Brown. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Allen. Is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Just quick comment. And just an explanation, I'm gonna vote yea. And the reason why is the activity that's gonna be conducted on that particular spot of parking, eight foot wide, 10 foot, whatever it is, is currently going on right there on the sidewalk. And as the mayor stated, we've, we've got a temporary agreement with them now. And, Ms. Davie, the word experiment was just a chosen word. See, it's, it's not a definite. But anyway, and I know, the only other comment I had, I wish we had a definite plan from the Chamber. I know you guys haven't had enough time, if you will, or came up with this thought soon enough to have that plan. But I wish you had a definite plan on the whole thing. But anyway, since the activity that's gonna take place in this area that we're approving is currently going on right there on the sidewalk, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be in favor of it. Thank you.
Okay, and discussion. And I certainly appreciate Mr. Pedrick's point of view that he brought up. And I have, I have the same feeling, really, I do. I'm concerned that we, I have concerns that we're taking on more than we can, we can chew right now. We have only a certain number of police officers. We generally have one officer per shift. And then you'll probably be on duty that night. And that's all we'll have is two police officers. And I'm just concerned that we're taking, taking more than we can chew. We do, we do, we'll have business operating there. If, if those spaces aren't leased, then these people are gonna flow out onto the street anyway, most likely.
Yes.
But, you know, I just don't know. I feel sometime, I feel like, you know, that we need to ease the community into this and not push it all on them at, at one point. You know, I'm, I'm on the fence at this moment. I haven't even, we're about to vote, and I haven't made my decision. So...
I'd like to do a follow-up comment. I agree with everything the mayor said and with what was stated. I mean, you heard me in the beginning on this subject about family, being family-oriented, and my concern for it. And the reason why I'm looking at this, I don't see really that we're adding any more other than square footage, if you will, to what's currently going on. And as the mayor just stated... to what's currently going on. And as the mayor just stated, even if we didn't approve it, it's going to overflow right there if no one rents those spaces. And they normally don't because it's right there in front of the board.
Yes, ma'am.
I was just wondering, will all this be shut down at 10 o'clock?
Yes.
I mean, at 8 o'clock?
Eight o'clock.
It's only during the duration of the event.
Yeah, 8 o'clock. That's what I understood.
8 o'clock, so we can, and Kim is not here, the manager of Harry's, but we can expect that Harry's would close that, move, corral these people out of there and herd them on back into the...
To the sidewalk.
Or to the building inside.
Yeah, exactly.
They need to be made aware of that.
Yeah, the time span I remember being stated denials beginning at 1 and ending at 8.
Correct.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All righty. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so that motion carries. All right. We're taking a big step here.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, I want to also, we need to take a little break here.
Yes.
But I want to advise the chamber folks, if you, one mention was made of having the train go down by Sands Park, all that. You know, when you start doing that or whatever, you're going to have to close streets, and we need to know that in advance and all that type of stuff. So keep that into consideration as well. All right. That closes, also closes off access to the festival. But thank you. We're going to take about an eight-minute break here, and then y'all come back right quick. All right, we are reconvening this meeting here of the Caravelle City Commission, September the 1st, 2022, at the Commission Chambers. So now we're going to move on to new business continued, item three, discussion of possible action concerning 801 Northeast Third Street. This is requested by Wanda Hallman Herring. And if you would come on up to the podium and just state your name there for the record, and I'll go ahead and say that Ms. Hallman Herring called me with a lengthy list of grievances regarding code enforcement of the property next door to her property, and you've provided these pictures for us then.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Wanda Hallman Herring. I'm here concerning the property I purchased last year at 801 Northeast Third Street. I bought the property, sold my, I built a cabin in Tennessee and lived there three years and wanted a place in Florida. And someone said, "Have you heard about Forgotten Coast?" And I said, "No." And they said, "You ought to go see care of it." So I came. I stayed here three weeks in Franklin Inn, and it was quite nice. And so I purchased this property, went home and spent time with my family and came back. The street is a dead-end street. At the end of the street, there was a privacy fence, but at the end of the street, I could see an older mobile home. But I thought, well, surely the city is on this. So when I came back in December, there at the end of the road and adjoining my property, all my property, there was washers, dryers, pool ladders, refrigerator, just junk metal. And so I came down to City Hall in January and I asked, who do I need to speak to? And they told me Ms. Keisha. So I said, "Well, I'd like to file a complaint." This was the young lady that sat out at the front desk. So she came back and she said that Ms. Keisha said that she was aware of this and there was an open complaint. So I said, "Well, good," and I left. A couple of months later, I came back because there had been nothing done. It was just getting worse. They were piling it up on top of, it was so high, it was pushing my privacy fence down. It was falling over on my property. I came back down, asked to speak to Ms. Keisha again, and they said she said she was busy. So I left. A couple of months later, I came back, and they said she was leaving for lunch. So I left again, and in the meantime, they pushed my privacy fence completely down on one section. There is so much junk there that water is standing. We go over to mow and weed the yard, and we're eat up with mosquitoes. There is dog feces all over our yard. We have to clean it up even to be able to mow or weed. I hired a surveyor to make sure I was in boundaries and to also do elevation survey. When I did elevation survey, I made sure that I wanted to be within limits when I built. So I called Mr. Gary. He came out. He saw it. There was a, at one point, there was a camper they're living in, in the road adjacent to my property. There was bicycles against the fence. There was vans parked out in front of my lots. It's just been one nightmare after another. I've exhausted all avenues. I've notified Keisha. I've notified Ms. Courtney, and they're living in a RV. The police officer came out and tagged it. They moved it out behind the mobile home because the mobile home appears to be not livable. They have encroached over all the way down our fence line, as you will see from these pictures. The first picture is our two lots. They moved the RV out they were living in, or the lady was living in, and pulled this, first picture of this camper out in front of our house, I mean, our lots. And it sat there for three weeks. And I went by there this afternoon, and it was gone. We've tried to put up the privacy fence. We can't even get behind our privacy fence because they blocked it totally off now with plywood. The survey, the gentleman who came from Mr. Thornberry's survey crew came out, and he couldn't even put the survey post on the back because they have a camper encroaching over on us. And if you can thumb through these pictures, this is just an example of what I went through for the past eight months.
Okay, Ms. Wanda, and then where you see, I just have a question here. We might have a couple of questions.
Okay.
So where you're showing this camper, is that parked in front of your, is that parked in front of her property?
Yes, it was parked in front of my property.
Oh, my goodness. Okay.
So it's gone today?
Yeah, it's gone now.
It had been sitting there three weeks. We went over there this past weekend. We bought an RV. I came down here, but I went to City Hall, and I was told I couldn't put my RV on it. So I feel like if I can't put my RV on it, then why would the city allow someone to live in one right in front of my front door?
Well, I think, Ms. Hallman, and when you called me, I didn't know the complete details, and I told you that I did one day here, the chief, who has worked on this as well as Ms. Keisha has for several months, over, talking over about this camper, and I didn't know where it was or anything. This is the first time I've seen it.
This camper that you have, I finally got the survey guy. He said, "I just can't put it up." I wasn't aware of it, but my husband asked him and said, "Is there not some way?" He said, "Well, I can slant a small one at the back just to show that they're encroaching over on you." So when I went to spoke to Ms. Keisha about them encroaching over on us, and she said, "Are they on you?" And I said, "Yes." And she said, "Well, good, then I can find you." And I said, "Well, you go ahead."
Well, now, one thing, if that was on my property, I would go ahead and remove it.
I can't get it out because there is so much debris on them, and I've got to get on, I've got to trespass on them to get the camper. And it's not my responsibility to remove this.
Okay, all right, all right. Please be calm now because I didn't understand, I didn't know all of the work that has gone on behind the scenes, and I don't know if you know, because I wasn't able to ask you about these things or talk to you about these things. There has been work that goes on behind the scenes, and I know about the camp. I didn't, I never saw it exactly where it was parked, as you showed in the picture. But I did hear the chief and Ms. Keisha over talking that they were trying desperately to find some way to move this camper out right away. I didn't know that it was this particular situation, that they, it was in such a deteriorated condition that it could not be picked up or hauled, or that the landfill had agreed to take it for free. The city wasn't going to have to pay to dump it, but we didn't have a way, the city did not have a way to move it. And they had to somehow figure out, I don't know how it got moved, but it's moved now. But the staff is going to give us, and the attorneys worked on this as well. Our city attorney's already worked on this. Our chief has worked on this. Ms. Keisha's worked on it since, I think, last December and even before that. The property owner, I'm understanding, has passed away. And the, there was no will left. And so if Mr. Hartman could tell us about that, it's in probate or it's going to have to go to court. This is probably going to be over a year-long process. And we had a process similar to this when, you all may remember, Mr. John Harris came up with the property next door to him, and that took a year to get that property taken care of. And this one may take a little longer, and I'll let Mr. Hartman tell us about it a little bit.
All right. I've spoken to Keisha and about what's all has gone on up to this point. And really, I would say at this point, we would take two steps, and there's a third item that Ms. Hallman brought up that we won't be able to help with. But we should have the building official go out there, inspect the building that's out there, and if it's not livable, then mark it condemned. Because that's what we did on Harris. That would then at least put it on the list that when we have the funds, the people, everything else, that we would have the option potentially of removing it, right, as a city. And then, as far as folks living in RVs, we don't allow that. And so that is straight code enforcement and no different than, I'm thinking of all the court cases I've had to file on folks who have an open container at the pavilion, or we've had this before where someone's living in a shed, for instance, that sort of thing. So this would be no different. And what we would do is file a case in county court to, for what would be injunctive relief, get jurisdiction over whoever's living in the RV. And they're going to have to move off that property. They have to move, you know, they can't live in an RV in the city. You can't do that. So that's, that's that. As far as encroachments and things, that is not the city's business. So if two neighbors have a dispute, which it sounds like you do, because I'm looking at the, it's not exactly accurate, but I'm looking at the aerial from probably years ago on the property appraiser database where they're encroaching on you with, over a property line, that's a private matter, and you have every right to go to court and seek relief against that property owner for him or whoever it is, the estate or the individual. I think they were married, encroaching on your property. But the city doesn't, doesn't stop encroachments. That's not a nuisance. That's not something that we would get involved in.
Well, I, this picture here just shows they knocked, they had so much junk metal that it knocked two sections of our privacy fence down. One was taken away. We put up one that was still standing. I went and bought materials and put up another one. You can see from this, there's no way I can, we can even get behind the fence to repair anything.
And that's, you should consider getting an attorney and handling that because that is not something the city would get involved in, that, what you're talking about. That would be trespass, you know, damaging your personal property, right, your fence and trespassing on your property.
So, so you're saying that the city has, who has responsibility of cleaning all this up?
At the point it becomes a nuisance, which is what we're talking about, is, if the point it's a nuisance, causing a public health problem, then code enforcement, right? We code enforce people. But if you simply, which I understand this is bad, right?
But in this case, we don't have anybody to code force.
Okay. Well, I have called the state of Florida, and their health department, and they are sending a codes inspector out.
And I recommended that.
Uh huh. That's a good thing.
I've called them.
Good.
And they said they would try to get somebody out this week because it's open. I mean, it holds so much water that it runs over on us. My husband and I were out in rubber boots, and it came all, I know I'm sure, but it all came almost to the top of my boots. I was standing in this nasty water.
This is terrible right here, and I was going to recommend, to call you, I was going to call you and recommend that you call the county.
I've already done that.
That's a very good thing.
I've exhausted all avenues.
But what is, what is happening now is, I don't know if the building inspector's been out there or not, but according to what Mr. Hartman has said, is that the building inspector needs to go there and look at what they're living in or the air, and if that is not livable, if it is deemed not livable by the building inspector, then he will condemn that building.
Is that Mr. Gary?
Is that Mr. Melander?
Mr. Gary has already been out. He came out the day that we were trying to survey because I wanted to, I wanted his opinion on, I hauled in 10 loads of dirt trying to build my pad up and wanted to know exactly how high I had to be to build this cabin. He went and looked at it just from the outside. He didn't trespass. He just went to the boundary line. And he called Keisha, and she told me she could not take his report or his complaint over the phone, that I would have to come down there again. So I went down there again.
Okay. And so...
But he has not been inside. He did not trespass. He was...
So he has not been there to look at the property?
Not inside the...
Not inside. So all this outside, and he called her.
And I, the reason the police is involved, I don't go out to the property either. The police do. And that was, that camper was actually the second camper that was in the road. So, I mean, we, it's not like we're not doing these.
I understand that. And I want you to understand that too, Ms. Herring, that they are, the staff is working on it.
This process is just, you know, people have rights. Unfortunately, it makes it very difficult. So, and we code forced the property across the street. It had some stuff. We got it cleaned up. They were willing, and that makes it so much easier when people are willing to code force. And a lot of times, we can use the fines and the fees. Well, in this case, there's nobody to assign it to because the person is deceased.
Right. The property owner is not there, and it's almost like, in my mind, these people are squatting. They're squatting on that property.
Even though they're family members.
Yeah, and they can't, there's no one to even issue a no trespass warrant because the property owner is passed.
The lady walked over to my property, and I don't remember the exact month, but she walked over to my property. And I asked her, as nice as I could, I said, "Please, can you clean this up? It's tearing my privacy fence down. It's not healthy. It's unsafe. There's a ton and handful of little critters."
I also have ordered two doctors to that property that the city has paid for in an effort to help her clean it up, to get some of that stuff off. So I've done that as well, which is what we offer to all our citizens. We try to get them to be compliant without having to spend attorney fees and going to court.
So, Mr. Hartman, then, you say the next step is for the building inspector to go out there and actually inspect that building and define whether or not it's livable?
Correct. And if it's not livable, if he condemns it, and I'm assuming something here I didn't even think of, is water sewer, is that, that's all not, they don't have an account anymore, do they, or is there?
Yes, they do.
They do. So if it's condemned, then I believe we can cut off water and sewer. You know, just, again, I'm not trying to make anybody's life difficult here, but if you have, I mean, how are they, how are they accessed? Are they just got to spick it? I mean, they run it to a...
I do not go on the property.
Yeah, because, all right. But, but if it's condemned, I was looking at the condemnation as more that now it's on our list, it's going to be money out of pocket, like we talked about with Harris, that we may or may not ever get back. And that's then, you know, we have a limited budget, we have all these things, but at least we're, it's an option, right? Now it's an option for the city to remove the structure and some of the debris and that sort of thing. As far as knocking down privacy fences, trespassing on your property or encroaching on your property, that's private, so we wouldn't get involved in that. And then, well, we talked about, you know, condemnation, and, you know, once it's condemned, again, water, sewer, those kind of things, you don't want to be running those to condemn a structure.
And so once it's condemned, then to remove the folks that are there, that would be a court process. You'll have to go, the city will have to go to...
The condemnation would be primarily to remove the structure that's there. If people, I mean, it is crazy, right? It is just like squatting. So if the people are mobile in an RV and they're driving around and they just, because it's a family area, they choose to park their RV there, then, correct. And then there would be, just like the folks living in the shed or anything else.
Well, they were the property owners, the folks living in the shed. We're the actual property.
Exactly. They were the property owners. And we could, once we had personal jurisdiction... Exactly, they were the property owners, and we could, once we had personal jurisdiction and a county court case.
They could go to court.
The judge could tell them, you can't do this, or, and if you violate now the court order, you can't do it, now you're in contempt. And he hates for it to go this far, but then they could get arrested, they could ignore the judge. But that wouldn't stop them from what it sounds like they're doing is parking in the right of way, just kind of keeping one step ahead, right, just moving around. And that's, we just chase them.
They are working on it, Ms. Hallman, I mean, it can't, it just doesn't happen overnight, and they are, they are working on it. And the next thing to do then would be next week is get Mr. Melander to go out there and cite whether or not that property is condemnable and livable, and then move from there as the process dictates by law. And that's all that can happen. And it's a good thing that you have called the health department out, because I don't know how they proceed, I honestly don't, but this water standing justifies that, and...
And it runs constantly, I mean, it rains, every time it rains, then our property is just, in effect, just nothing but just water. And I've spent approximately $3,000 hauling in dirt, paid someone to spread the dirt, you know, especially in the back and on that pad where I was planning on building.
Well, you know, I'm very sorry, I have real empathy for you, and I've seen this process go before, and it does take about a year, it really does. So, and it takes a court order to get people off the property. So we most likely...
So we're talking, I've already been into this eight months, we're talking about another year?
Probably, what do you think, Mr. Hartman? Once you get it condemned, once it's condemned, if it's condemned?
It took us quite a while.
It took a long time.
It took more than a year.
It did, it took us quite a while on this one.
And the other one that actually he's talking about, the shed, that area, it was the property across the street from that, so that area kind of has always been, you know, we've steady on that area because of the, you know, the low property values and stuff, so we are, that one took us over a year, and this one took about two years in total.
It took us a while.
It does take time, because it has to go back and forth to the court.
So far, I've got over $30,000 cash invested in those two lots, cash.
We understand.
And when I bought the property, that street, everybody on that street was keeping it up, the two lots across the street were undeveloped property. Now later, someone used it as a city dump. But I will have to say, Ms. Courtney, she took care of that, and it's gone.
But good.
But it was just a nightmare, too. And so I had one beside me, one across the street.
We had some similar issues up on Northwest Second Street, near Avenue J. And I'm going to tell you that the staff has worked and worked and worked on that for years, literally years, but you would not recognize that block on Northwest Second Street coming off of Avenue J, you would not recognize it. It is all cleaned up with new mobile homes on it, and it was a pretty rundown some years ago, starting back in 2015, or earlier, we started on that. So it takes time. Folks are, they, it's, we're having growing pains here, we really are having growing pains, and we're in an area where we have culture and tradition, and we do the best we can, and we know that there are some hazardous things going on here. And you've done well by calling the health department, and we'll get the building inspector out and see what can happen, how that can move forward.
If I may take just a brief minute, there's one more issue I'd like to address. We went over there this afternoon before we came here, and I have already complained about this, like I said, we go to mow and weed, which we're doing again this week, we have our RV and a park in Panacea, so we go every weekend and take care of our lots. We can't mow, we can't weed, there's dog feces everywhere, and we went this afternoon and three dogs met us on our lot, small dogs, but dogs. Is there not an ordinance where you have to have the dogs put up?
Yes, ma'am, have you contacted the animal control?
No, I've contacted everybody else, but I haven't...
Okay, that you would need to do, is that correct? She needs to call animal control and report that.
And there's trash every weekend, I'm picking up trash where the dogs drag, plates, toys, everything over there, it's just...
But you're going to have to make that complaint on animal control as well, because that's between you and the people that own the animal, and you will, you call Franklin County Animal Control, and you can find that on Franklin County government website. And just call them and report your issues and find out when they're going to come out, so you can meet them even. And Franklin County manages our animal control force here in the city.
I'll do that.
Okay, all right.
Thank you very much.
And thank you, thank you. And I want to thank staff, too, for working on this project all these months, and what's going to have to happen going forward. All right, so now we'll move to, that was the last one under new business, is that correct? I just want to make sure, this is getting a little late for... Okay, item, this is sole business, and it's item one, and we have this discussion of possible action concerning parking along Marine Street and Tallahassee Street. So we tabled this item from last month, and we were, we had, I know everybody had some questions, and Commissioner Brown presented a good map, I like the map, I like the initiative that she went ahead and put a map and outlined the business district very well, I agree with that. She color-coded it, I guess the green was outside the business district, basically, or where the, we really didn't, you were suggesting...
Not the main name.
Yeah, and then the red suggesting that we needed some parking controls, which we do need some parking controls. So I believe also, there's two areas where you have marked green that should be red, I think, as I've got the copy and studied it. The area there in front of the hairspray, those are businesses, and sometimes there's a construction business there as well, and sometimes I see every one of those parking places are full between those two businesses, and that may need to be considered red, is in the business district as well. And then over here, this area next to the gallery and the little old police station, those are businesses as well, and that may need to be red instead of green to mark where we need to pay attention to our parking issues, I think. But I want to say that, you know, we had our police chief talk to us at the last meeting, and he explained to us that we have one officer per shift, one officer per shift, and that officer covers the entire city of Carabelle. And that officer even has to accompany the animal control person out on animal control calls. So, you know, it's going to be difficult for an officer to really, truly, honestly, and fairly manage two or three hour parking limits. You know, it might be that the officer has to go off to an animal control call, or to a domestic dispute call, whatever it may be, or to help with a flat tire, and then someone overstays their parking, and they get fined, but the next person doesn't get fined. And then, so it's going to be difficult to do that, in my opinion. And I'm taking the recommendation from the chief, because he works it all the time, he's worked the beat as a regular officer as well. I don't have the knowledge or the experience or the expertise to try to say how his staff operates or what they can and can't do. Now, we have had a commissioner and a CRA member state that the business employees take up over half of the business parking marked in red every day. And if we were to develop an ordinance that had something that ours, or put signage up, signage up that said, vehicle parking only, two hour limit, violators will be towed, I have to ask myself, and I'll ask the board, does this board really want to develop and enforce a policy that's going to tow away shop owners and employees' vehicles and visitors and patrons? Do we want to do that? Do we really, do we really want to do that?
No.
I mean, the number one thing here is, these business owners in these red-marked areas, now not down by the pavilion, we've got a little bit different area there where we need just plan out no overnight parking. People like to go fish off that pier, too, and then make fish for longer than two hours. These business owners somehow need to come together. They need to come together and develop, as you have suggested some, and I think you have suggested some, location away from the front of their businesses. Just like I have asked all the staff members and all the commission members not to park at the front, in the front, when they come to City Hall, that we need to leave these parking places for our customers, our constituents, our citizens, our water and sewer customers. Everybody's supposed to park back here, but I actually see some commissioners parking in the front. So, but these business owners have got to do the same thing, they have got to ask their employees, let's find a place where everybody has an employee parking lot, and everybody can park there, they can park at the Messer Pavilion, they can park around the corner by the History Museum, or up here by the Bicycle Shop, there's tons of parking there. Over here on Avenue C, maybe, you know, Courtney and I talked about, maybe someone can go to, Mr. Todd is his first name, he's the manager of the Crowder property, and see if some parking can be done behind coastal properties. There is that vacant lot on the other side of the old Franklin Realty on the south side, but if you park in there, if folks park in there, they're probably afraid they might get blocked by parallel parking there that's in front of that vacant lot. So I can understand folks might not want to park there. But on the north side of that old Franklin Realty building, it could be some parking for four or five spaces there, but that would need to be negotiated with the owner of that property, or the person who's managing, the owner has passed away. So that's, you know, what I think that needs to happen first, and then come back and let's see, and try that as an experiment, and see then, do we need to put up vehicle parking, two hour limit, three hour limit, whatever, violators will be towed, because if we do that, the employees and the business owners are going to be the first to go. And I really don't want to do that. I don't want to do that to the employees and the business owners of downtown Carabelle. And we can't pick and choose, can we, Chief? I think we need to have a workshop on this. I think that we discussed this briefly, that about, and it's been suggested by several people, including the chief, including my husband, including Mr. Sullivan and myself, to make a one-way street from 98 down to Southeast Avenue C, and to make a one-way street from Tallahassee up to the northeast-Northwest Avenue A intersection on the north side of the Messer Pavilion, near the Carabelle Hotel. That one-way street coming south would stop all the boat trailer, truck trailer units from coming into the business district and parking, and someone had given pictures of where you got, I saw one picture where you had a truck and a trailer, and they were actually taking up three parallel parking spaces. So they would come, if they wanted to unload and come back down here looking for a space, they would be forced east on Southeast Avenue C, actually where we're getting ready to develop some overflow boat parking. It could be done, it could easily be done, this has been suggested many times in the past, to make all of Marine Street a one-way street, but I don't know if I'm ready for that, to suggest that at this time. But then you could have, you'd have certainly safer driving there, instead of what we have on each street, these are old streets, cars were smaller back when these streets were flatted and laid out, and you'd have safer driving. You've got one-way streets in Appalachia Colom, folks talk about that Carabelle is big, growing, we need to go with the flow and start doing what the big cities do, and the big cities have one-way streets. And this is a proposal that I think we should talk about at workshop in detail, and see how the flow would go out on the other side streets and how people would access the businesses. So I've talked enough, who wants to talk next?
Just for the record, because I received them, and I want you guys to know, you all got this chisened email with some pictures, and then I also received feedback from none of the businesses downtown that they're in favor of a limited parking.
They're in favor of it?
Yes.
And do they want to be towed, or are they going to move?
I just got emails that said we're in favor of limited, I don't know the details.
That's why we need to have a workshop, and these folks need to...
Just for the record, because I received them.
I spoke to every single one of those businesses and explained, sent this photo, and explained what I talked about at the last meeting, that I suggested two-hour limited parking in the red areas, and to have signs that stated, vehicle parking only, two hour limit, violators will be towed. Everything I said is what I talked to every one of these business owners about, and they were in agreement with it. And those are the business owners on Tallahassee and Marine Street.
Okay, then I would suggest that we would have a workshop, and all those business owners need to come, and they need to let us know what they plan to do with their own vehicle and their employees' vehicles, what they plan to do with that, and then we need to somehow find a solution on where we're going to find a police officer who's going to enforce this. Do you have any idea on that?
Well, it would be like any other code enforcement, we don't have the police officers riding up and down the street giving code complaints unless it is requested by a citizen. So it wouldn't be any different than any other code we're enforcing around the city.
So you're saying a traffic ordinance would be requested, enforcement of a traffic ordinance would be requested by a citizen?
Someone would file a complaint.
Is that correct, Mr. Hartman?
Yes, obviously, the police, if someone, I mean, we talked about this before, we're talking about chalk and tires, and seeing how many people were parked and all this, so you have all those problems attendant to it, but if someone, a property owner didn't like someone parking in front of their place for more than two hours, and they documented as such, and they called the police down, and the police came down, and they showed them the evidence that it's over there for two hours, they're in violation of orders, they'll get towed away.
So then it could be, the property owner could pick and choose who gets enforced?
They could. And now when I say that, they would have to document that the person's in violation.
The chief wants to speak as well.
Okay, Mr. Hartman is correct about the documentation part, but the rule of thumb is we have to observe that, we have to observe the violation for us to be able to do anything about it. So we would then have to sit there and look at them for two hours to know that they violated that ordinance.
That's what I have experienced with Keisha on code enforcement, I'll take her a picture, and she says, I have to go out there and take that picture, I can't use your picture.
You have to, in order to, in order to enforce it, you have to observe it. You know, I can't sit there and go, you know, Keisha calls on Courtney because she's mad with her saying she was driving crazy, I can't just go to ask Courtney or give her a ticket for it because she said so. I have to observe her committing violation. But if it's documented and that's acceptable, you know, then we could go that route, but it's both...
Are we talking writing tickets, though, or are we talking calling a tow truck?
Well, you've got to understand, too, and there's something else we brought up before, what if, what if the mayor borrows my vehicle and parks there? You have a vehicle towed, the owner of that vehicle has to get retrieved from the tow truck company with a proper identification.
Right, I have a car.
Fair, to that owner to go pay a $200 tow bill, because they let their friend borrow their car? So that's, you know, there's several things to think about, so.
And that's quite a distance for, you know, all of that, all the way down to the pavilion, and two hour parking down at the pavilion, I don't know if I'm in favor of that, that needs to be, no overnight parking.
That was just something we brought up at the previous meeting, but the main concern and complaints from every business owner pretty much down... but the main concern and complaints from every business owner pretty much downtown is parking in the business district. That's not even the business district, but I just put it on there because we discussed it. But we're only getting busier. More and more people are coming every day. This isn't gonna resolve itself. This isn't gonna go away. Something needs to be done. And I think with this many business owners speaking out, that is apparent.
Well, I, well, let's have a workshop then.
Let's do it.
Yeah. That's, that's what I was about to do.
We can settle this here tonight.
We're not, we're not, there's, there's a legitimate, there's a legitimate concern, I see. And, uh, we definitely can't solve it tonight because we, this could be hashed about for quite some time to go through all the pros and cons, if you will. And I would love to have, uh, the business owners here.
They need to be here.
So I'm definitely, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion that we table it and, uh, set up a workshop.
I'll second.
Okay, I'd like to, Courtney and I had talked about when we could possibly have a workshop, uh, when we're all getting together would be, and so that the owners have enough time to come, would be September the 27th when we have our, um...
Final budget?
Final budget, yes. And that's the 5:01 so we could deal with the final budget. We won't have to go over anything because if there's anything to go over or changes to be made, that'd be done at the, um, first hearing and have that workshop at 5:30.
My motion will include to, uh, table this, um, and have a workshop on September 27th at 5:30 PM on this same subject. Is that good, folks?
Okay, I think that's, I like that. Thank you very much. September 27th. Okay, so we have that motion back, Commissioner Melander. Uh, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Allen. And, uh, discussion. These property owners, these business owners must be at the workshop. They must be at the workshop. So that we can hear from them firsthand. I haven't seen any of the emails from them. But we, we need to hear from them firsthand and they need to understand from the attorney and from the chief, uh, you know, exactly how this will be enforced, if it can even be enforced, and they need to understand the concerns that the commission has as well and we can talk about the one-way streets as well at that time.
Well, exactly. Because like I said, I think there's a lot to be discussed, both illegally where we can and can't go and, uh, what all the concerns are.
All right, then. All in favor of the tabling to the workshop on the 27th at 5:30?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright, and that motion carries and this really needs to be advertised. Okay. Uh, the next item on the agenda is, um, where is it? Uh, item two, and this is a possible action regarding development of the boat ramp overflow parking area on Southeast Avenue C. And, uh, Mr. Large was supposed to bring us a conceptual design, which we asked, and he's not here today.
I'll make a motion to table.
Very good. And that motion is back, Commissioner Melander, second back, Commissioner Brown. Uh, discussion and we'll, uh, put this item on, on the October agenda. Is that alright with everyone? Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. Alright, then, that was the last item on the agenda. It's 9:26. Uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, that motion is back, Commissioner Brown, second back, Commissioner Melander. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries then.
Yay.
Good night.